Okay, well, welcome to the Governing Board Work Study Session, March 23rd. And again, like to welcome all of you here that will be helping us tonight and presenting, and also welcome all those who are online. And I would like to remind you, when we have a regular meeting, we do have a call to the public and an opportunity for you to make a comment. And you would do that through our site, our website, and by just sending it to comments@payud.org. And do that by Monday, the day before the meeting, by 5:00 PM. And then we'll make sure that we read that. Again, understand that that's just a call to the public, and we won't be responding to that, but we will certainly listen. So, okay, we've opened this up, and did I give a time? It's 5:07. We'll start with a roll call, and please, Board Members, sound off, please.
Des Rae Fowler, Board Clerk.
Thank you.
Gabby Carey, Member.
Thank you, Dee.
Sandra Kidman.
Thanks, Ms. Kidman.
Charles Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, and I'm Bob Candelaria, President of School Board, and Superintendent Wallen, good to see you. And you want to sound off?
Thank you, Sir Larry Wallen, Superintendent.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You know, I am the real proud Superintendent of two state champions.
Really? What happened? I didn't hear anything about that.
Oh, come on. Now, can you share that with us?
No, I've already been warned by Sandra Kidman that unless I say something about music, I can't talk about sports anymore. So, I really enjoyed the National Anthem by Lisa Covington. So, there it is, and we are state champions! Yeah, the girls and boys did a great job. Very, we've never seen that before, and the first time we've ever seen the the boys win a championship, so congratulations to all of them.
I understand this is the third time for the girls?
Third out of the last five years, that's about their seventh.
That is totally awesome, that speaks to...
About their seventh title. So, anyway, it's good. And we're joined by Ms. Lindhoff, and the Executive Secretary of the Board. Appreciate you very much. And we'll go ahead and get started with our work-study session. And the first thing, the first thing on our agenda is COVID-19 response and fundee sources, Jeannie Wood and Superintendent Wallen.
Good afternoon, and let me share my screen. And can I get a thumbs up if you see my screen? Okay, thank you. Governing Board President Candelaria, Superintendent Wallen, Governing Board Members, good afternoon. This is part two of the series of three presentations that will be given. Just to refresh your memory, on part one, when we consider the purpose of a grant, a grant truly is a bridge between programmatic implementation and the fiscal responsibility. When we think about being good stewards of our money that we have, it's important for us to look at both aspects of that. In part one, I gave a high-level overview of how we prioritize our need based on five standards of practice. We also spoke to two out of five building directors, district directors and coordinators that gave us process information of what the usage of that money has looked like and some of the needs moving forward. For part two, I'm going to move to the fiscal side of that and really give numbers based on current monies that we have available to spend for our recovery efforts. And in part three, it will be back to the process of inviting in other, the other three directors to speak to the process of how we've done programmatic implementation and use of these monies. I share this with you every time I speak about COVID funds. This really has helped to keep us grounded on prioritizing our needs. On the onset of COVID, we had long-term and near-term needs. ADE described that as thinking about phases of recovery, the first one being the relief phase, the second one being preparation and prevention, and the last being the recovery phase. And they had timelines associated with that. We now understand that the relief phase and the preparation and prevention state, stage actually has gone longer than what we initially anticipated, that it helps to keep us mindful of concentrating on the most impactful investments for near- and long-term planning purposes. Number one, to improve the district's capability to proactively identify individual student needs. The second, to improve accessibility of differentiated instruction and support services, including mental health during both in-person and virtual situations. And the third need, simplify the complex array of new processes, procedures, and platforms necessary to operate a flexible school district. Right now, our leaders and our site-level teams are engaging in the process of completing their comprehensive needs assessment. They're conducting root cause analysis, and they're writing their integrated action plans for next year. We are currently living in multiple grant cycles as of now, and that will be part of our conversation later. But to prevent burnout and burden on our teams that are looking at these needs intently, it is super-important for us to take some of that from them by simplifying what is needed to still make sure that we are offering students support services that they need during this time. To begin with, I just want to show you a timeline. And since then, this afternoon, right before our school board meeting started, I sat part in a town hall provided through ADE in which additional timelines were given to us that showed the breakdown of this in a more efficient way than what I have shared here. So, be looking for that, I will share that as well. Again, I submitted this prior to that, so that just shows how quickly some of this information is being updated as well. But when we think back to March of last year, we were given ESEA flexibilities. Those included waivers and ways to use money that we typically do not associate with how we use our title funds. I will go into detail with that in a later slide, but I wanted to share that was the first flexibility that we were given, began that early, and again, that was part of the relief phase. Next, in April of 2020, DEMA came out with monies that were made available, mostly in the area of PPE, to get out to our students and to our families. And I want to make note here that there's three of these that are above the line and two that are below. When we think about management of these monies or what that looks like, the bottom two funding sources, the DEMA funds and ESG, those really were looked at more closely by our business manager. And when we think about the ones above ESEA flexibilities, SRR1, SRR2, that really was approached a little differently with planning and a true grant process for how those monies are used. Again, I will detail that more later. Next in line is SRR1 monies. Those were released to us in June of 2020. In December of 2020, ESG monies were made available. And January 2021, SRR2 monies were made available. And as we're all aware now, SRR3 monies will become available to us. We're anticipating a date of summer 2021. And more information to follow on that. I will be attending an ASBA webinar with that information tomorrow, I believe. So, to break them down individually to give you more information, ESA flexibilities came from the CARES Act, which was written into law on March 27th, 2020. The flexibilities allowed schools to repurpose existing K-12 funds for technology infrastructure and for teacher training on distance learning. For us, what that looked like at PUSD was we had unused Title I-A money that we did not spend for after-school programming. So, those monies were repurposed for needed technologies to provide distance learning to our students. Chromebooks and iPads were purchased, and the amount shown on the screen, $67,000. That's not a total lump sum of the amount of money that were spent on these technologies, but that was used from Title I after-school programming. We also, in fiscal year 20, had unused Title V or RLIS monies that we had set aside for summer school programs that did not happen last year. And these monies were used for CLP development, acronyms in education. Our CLP is our Continuous Learning Plan. And Superintendent Wallen brought a team of educators, administrators, and directors together in early June to start talking through the idea of how do we return safely to school? What does that need to look like? What do we need to have in play? That changed into the Distance Learning Plan. Once those requirements were set forth by our state, an additional information was given, and we spent the $54,000 on the Continuous Learning Plan from Title V monies. For SRR1 monies, we received just under half a million dollars with that. The way that we were able to do that was from the CARES Act or the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. These monies were released to our district in June of 2020. However, one unusual stipulation to these monies were that we were able to use them proactively, meaning we had some costs that were accrued as of March 2020 that we were able to go back and retroactively pay for things that we had already spent. And that's typically not what a grant looks like. There's clear planning in grants to say, this is our need, this is our intended outcome, this is how we're going to use that money. And so, this really did set an unusual precedence moving forward. So, we're allowed, the official start date of COVID is March 13th, 2020, so any expenses accrued after that, we were able to go back and scoop up with these monies. We are able to obligate these funds through September 30th of 2022. And it really was designed to help address local relief, prevention, and preparation, and recovery efforts relative to responding to COVID-19. To give you an update on the status of this funding source, this grant has been written, it has been approved through ADE, and we are starting to draw down some of those funds as well. The next installment of monies that were made available was ESG or Enrollment Stabilization Grant. We received over a million dollars from this. This also was from the CARES Act. However, it ran through the Governor's Office. So, when we think about funds, some come through our Department of Education and some come through our Governor's Office. They're all considered CARES Act funds, but it depends on who has the management of these funds. The Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, and the intent of Governor Ducey, and this is how he wrote his entire plan, was Arizona Open for Learning Plan. How can we safely reopen our schools for students? The application we submitted was submitted in September of 2020. However, funding was released in November of 2020, so there was a little bit of a time gap between there. The program period, again, starts back from March of 2020 and runs through December 4th of 2020. It was used to improve the school's budget stability, and the preponderance of this money was used on salaries and benefits. The status of this plan is that it's been written, it's been approved, and all of the monies have been obligated. There is no chance for revision of this money. This money truly was our most expedited funding source, and we have spent this money. The next set of money that was made available was SRR2, in the amount of $2 million. This came from the SIRS Act, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. It was released in January of 2021. And the same as CARES Act money, we can use it for pre-award costs dating back to March 13th of 2020. These monies are available for obligation through September 30th of 2023. And right now, our status for these monies is the planning phase. At today's townhouse meeting through ADE, they were talking about the inclusion of SRR3 monies, and they gave a recommended timeline of how schools should prioritize which grants they're planning first. It was a relief to hear that we're on the right track, meaning their recommendation was, we are currently in fiscal year 21 for our entitlement grants. We have the opportunity, over the next couple of weeks if needed, to submit any revisions for programming that we have. As of now, we have not heard word, and so we are still running under the assumption that no flexibilities will be given for fiscal year 21 monies. So, we are attempting to really look at our plans now to see, is there any part of this money that we need to make changes to? SRR1 has already been written and approved through them, that anything that we see that needs revision, now is the time to start building in those revisions first. But then they said to pay attention now to fiscal year 22 entitlement planning, moving forward, and to wait to tackle SRR2 and SRR3 monies until after your fiscal year 22 plans have been written around your entitlement. That is nice information to hear, to confirm that we're on the right track of how we're prioritizing, where we need to be mindful of paying attention to these funding sources. Here is the SRR2 timeline review. When we talk about usage of the money and when it becomes available, there's also a carryforward timeline as well. So, SRR1, the application opened May 29th of 2020. For SRR1, the initial project budget term ends in September 30th of 2021. However, even though the planning phase ends in September of 2021, we can still use those monies until September 30th of 2022. So, they also provided a nice timeline that I want to share with you very soon in the near future to lay that out. Because when we think about this starting with fiscal year 20 and the next rounds of monies through carryforward being used, we're talking about six fiscal years and thinking about the planning for that, running through fiscal year 25. And we are going to need to be diligent in going back to that timeline again and again and looking at that to help us ensure that we are looking at the right place of how we need to repurpose some of this money, especially because some of the planning that we're doing, even if you have some allowable time period to make these changes, we need to be flexible in our thinking as well, because changes keep coming at us.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Hey, I've... Can you give me just a real brief idea of, you know, it's really awesome to see we're on track, and I know how much work has gone into this. But in terms of the planning for use of these dollars, what are the, some of the big-ticket items we're talking about? If you can help that with that a little bit?
Yes, so we have spent a lot of money on ensuring equitable access of technology for our students.
Okay.
We have spent time training teachers on what that looks like, what the usage of that looks like. Moving forward, although we do not know, right now, the executive order states that we want to have as many students as possible engaging in in-person instruction right now. We know the reality is, the choice has still been given to students and families for the option of virtual learning, and our teachers are doing a combination of both. They are teaching students that are sitting in front of them, and they're teaching students that are engaging virtually. Another way to think about that is blended learning. And so, let's just say, best-case scenario, all of our students are able to join us for in-person instruction next year. Some of the unintended good consequences of COVID is the idea that technology integration is not going away. So, when we think about some of the needs that are being talked about, we want the idea of building in technology integration specialists so that we can continue with that work. There's been much focus this year on social-emotional learning. That can't go away, so we need to think about how we're prioritizing our funds to ensure that that is something that is just part of what we do on a day-to-day basis. STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, the idea of how we engage our learners at a high level will be of relevant importance moving forward. So, it's just magnifying the same way that when we had, when we were in the relief phase and we saw the magnification of not having technologies accessible to students, we need to build on that capacity of what good things did come out of that that we don't want to let go of for next year. Did that help to answer that question?
Yeah, I think so, and what I really wanted to get because of the, because of where we're going, is the fact that our staff is being geared up with it. So, those are the, when you say training, all of those, the technical, and I'll call them technical experts, that is, that's our staff you're talking about. And they're being built into that retooled for all of that, because I, you know, I've seen, I think I've seen that going on. The other point that, and you may not have the answer to, because we're hearing a little bit of it now, that at some point in time, and it probably hasn't been mentioned, the funding and those kind of things will go to those that are in classrooms. Have you heard any of that movement at all?
I have not heard any of that. Right now, we are compliant with the idea of providing in-person instruction, but still the choice of allowing students to remain virtual for this year.
Right.
I have not heard any word, and yes, we have heard that as well, that eventually it will be only students accessing that in-person instruction. But in terms of trainings that I've been to of how to use this money and what that looks like, that has been no part of the dialogue.
Okay, thank you. It's just something I've been hearing, and I didn't know what kind of traction it had.
Right, I want to go back to something that you said. In terms of using this money, and you said, really, the experts in the room are our teachers who are doing this. That goes back to the idea of the same way that we used our ESEA flexibilities to start the conversation around the Continuous Learning Plan.
Right.
There is the vision moving forward as well as bringing in a team of teachers this summer to continue that conversation of how do we ensure the lessons that they learned from the quick implementation and turnaround that they had, and what do they need to keep in the forefront of mind moving forward? So, those are our content area experts in many ways.
Great, that sounds real good. Thank you.
So, on top of the COVID monies and what that looks like, as I mentioned earlier, our teams are looking at what is written within their plans now, as well as planning for what needs to be written within their plans for next year. This is a graphic that we use to illustrate that. Plan, do, study, act, plan, do, check, act, and the process of that. We used this today during our ILT meeting with leaders. We've used this last year as well. And it does give you a good visual of what that process looks like at a high level. And the description used today was ensuring that we go back and ask the essential question of what impact did this have on student learning? And making sure that whatever it is that we're writing within our grants really does reflect that accurately as we're looking at grant-funded action steps and saying, did it meet its required purpose of what it was supposed to do? And asking ourselves that question. This was shared with you during part one of the presentation. It will come back again during part three, and we do want to make sure that the same way that we have the long-term and short-term needs available, this will continue to be the focus. This is a slide that CDC shared, and they had mentioned that with all of the districts across the nation that they're working with, these really rose to the top as their top five needs recognized by all districts. During part one, we talked about addressing food insecurity, and Art gave an update on number of meals being served, et cetera. I do want to tie that back really quickly to the fiscal part of that. When completing grants as a title district, we are asked to report our free and reduced lunch numbers. For example, in the year of COVID, they have extended flexibilities for us to use last year's numbers. And they've also made available the opportunity for us to have the choice of last year's or the year prior count to look at that. But then we have to explain why we chose to use one or the other. So, that will be a conversation that we have with Art moving forward of which would be the appropriate number to use for that, for the fiscal side of that. We also had Tashina come and share what that looks like fostering social and emotional well-being, because some of our contacts with students and families happened during the relief phase of that as they were delivering necessities out to families. And we know that our MTSS process with a focus on academic, behavioral, and social-emotional learning, that work will also continue into next year as we move forward with our recovery phase of planning. Brian will be joining us for part three to provide an update on student access to technology. As I mentioned earlier, we don't want the purchased technologies to go away. We just need to ensure that we're using them to the best of our capacity, that our teachers, students, and families are trained on the usage of those technologies, and develop that plan moving forward. We had talked about the idea of, right now, we're in the planning phase of our summer school and thinking about how we are going to use our technologies, how we're going to do the check-in, checkout process of those, and those allowability issues that we're talking about right now. There will be a continued conversations about opportunities for online learning and maintaining student equity as well. As I shared earlier in the presentation, a grant lives between programming and fiscal responsibilities. Our next steps, sites are engaging in the process of their needs assessment and writing their current integrated action plan. Our entitlement fund timeline, our preliminary allocations were given to us on March 1. Our plans are due to ADE by May 1. And something that I didn't share on this slide, but I do want to share with you, we received an additional $2,000 recently from Title I funds, which means we're in revision for fiscal year 21 and writing for fiscal year 22 again. It's only the preliminary allocations that have been released at this point. We will receive final allocations. Typically, we get those monies in August. Last year, we did not receive our final allocation amount until November. So, I don't know when to anticipate that timeline for that, sometime between August and November. Poverty Counts information, I shared that with you earlier in terms of the conversation with Art and Millie now to best identify which of the two prior years we use as our count for this year. And in our ILT meeting today, we also talked about the importance of, we have been told very clearly that for this year, we will not feel the impact of some of these applications not being submitted. We are community eligibility provision, and we're thankful for that. However, we are going to really need to get our process together to ensure that those are returned, because when we're going to feel the impact of that is the following school year. We have been engaging in ongoing consultations. We had our tribal consultation earlier this month. Private school consultations will continue throughout this month and next. Private school consultations will continue throughout this month and next. Our linked competitive grants timeline for our entitlement gl- grants, CSI and TSI comprehensive support and improvement and targeted support and improvement. The deadline for those grants is May 30th of this year. We are still awaiting year two funding updates. And S R three information is slowly being released as we speak. There is an ASBA webinar tomorrow of this week and we will have a better idea of what that looks like. We have anticipated that that will be 2.3 times the allocation amount of S R two monies. So we know that that will be our most substantial pot of money um, when released. Okay, I just spewed a lot of information. Um, Superintendent Wallen, do you have anything that you would like to add? And I'm open for any questions that you have.
Wow, that was awesome, Jeannie. Um, my, here's my question for you. How many budget years are you living in right now?
Right now, I'm only living in three budget years.
Three years.
Three, but when we start thinking about building our sustainability plan, I'm going to be living in six budget years. So, and I'm accustomed to living, now is typically our difficult time when we're living in two. So, um, yeah, we're living in a lot of years right now.
And, and I think it's important to understand that all this COVID money, these S R ones, S R twos, S R threes, care funds, those are bubble monies. Which means they're gonna bubble away at some point and not be here. And so we've got to go back to basics and look at where we are in relation to what we can fund continuously. Uh, but it gives us a year or two to begin to uh, gear down or gear up, whichever way we need to go to, to meet the needs of our students. And that, that pathway to a B district, those shifting priorities and challenges, it's getting a little bit more stable now with S R three coming out, although I do understand there may be another uh, a budget, another federal legislation coming down in the future. But uh, one of the things that's really important that goes with this is the um, the federal drug, the Food and Drug Administration, keeping that, that cafeteria piece going for art, keeping those mills going. Uh, we're even looking at giving five-day meals this summer. Those are really important for our students and putting those pieces together. That poverty count information is absolutely critical. That sets us up for a lot of additional funding, but those pieces all, you know, gosh, Jeannie, you've got this big, huge world ball on your shoulder there.
Uh, today, during today's town hall meeting, it was helpful. Um, one of the things that they asked LEAs to reflect on is what inventive programming ideas have been going out, what additional support can the Department of Education provide to districts right now? And I feel like some themes rose from the conversation of sharing those deadlines really explicitly and graphically showing what that looks like. Because it's one thing to say, hey, we have six years of grant cycle funding coming out. It, it makes it more manageable when you think about chunking it out differently. Schools are reimagining a lot of things and that's important. And the idea of when we talk about flexibilities with money, uh, the term used today is we really need to be flexible with our thinking as well. So we are so accustomed to making a plan and saying, we are going to stick to this plan. Well, that's good in some aspects, but our realities have changed. And so we have to get accustomed to the idea of yes, plan, prioritize, make sure that we going back to the first slide that I shared, how can we reduce the burden? By simplifying some of these processes so not get away from how we're prioritizing these funds. Um, but really being open to the idea of reimagining how we're using these monies a little differently. And so in a way, um, it's exciting to think about that. Just making sure that we go back to the idea of we want to be good stewards of this money. And you're absolutely correct, Superintendent Wallen. At some point, this money will go away. We need to ensure that we're building sustainable structures in the meantime, so that the intent behind that stays.
And if you can note, I believe it was slide two, was the immediate needs ongoing. Uh, that is critical that we maintain this framework as we're looking forward and looking at distributing these monies. We have our immediate needs. Right now, one of the immediate needs would be to balance the budget for next year. Uh, and the next year, we're almost having to look at two to three years ahead now, based on all the, the S R monies. And then what are our ongoing needs? So what is our need, needs to get through this year's budget and balance it? What will be our immediate needs to get through next year's budget? What's our ongoing needs, things that, that stay with us that are processes and procedures? And platforms that we need to operate a flexible school district? This is a really good balance to the near and long-term needs that we're going to be facing. Thank you.
Board members, anybody have any comments or questions for uh, Mrs. Woods or Superintendent Wallen? I'll, I'll, I'll have a question because I really like, I like hearing that you've got some peer group that you can work within that framework. Uh, and a question I have, dude, does that provide you with some networking capability? It may help you with what you do. Obviously hear things in the meetings, but anytime you come up against, you know, kind of a hurdle, uh, do you feel like you have any kind of support from that group?
I do. Uh, the town hall itself was a different format. However, I am part of a Title I community of practitioner, C O P. It's definitely nice to hear firsthand from other federal programmers and other districts in general, what's working. And I have some outreach with Chinley and other districts. It's just nice to hear how other schools are using these monies and using them effectively and what program, what programming is working. That's good to have on any year. Um, especially now that we're looking at different ways and we have the availability of these programming. It's going to be essential moving forward to have those continued relationships.
Good. That's, that sounds really good. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a statement again. I hope I don't s- step on my tongue too much here. Uh, but, and you don't have to answer things at this point. But um, I know how much in, how mu- how involved grants are. And not only that, then the work really starts. I mean, once you get a grant, that's fun and that's great. And most everyone can take advantage of it. The problem with that being is sometimes they grant as much more laborious than it's worth at times. And then, so I heard the $2,000, I'm saying, I'm wondering how much work that costs. Anyway, uh, so going forward, um, the, the thing I hope is happening is it's when this, when these, we accept these grants, then the metrics start and then the application and like you said, the fiscal responsibility. Um, and within, within those things, is there, is there the latitude to bring someone into, and I'll just put it in terms of, I understand, I apologize, that you could have a manager of change that comes in, that actually oversees and helps. You do what you need to do, or whoever takes responsibility for the grant once we get it. Uh, and I'm making statements that I'll, I'll make assumptions. I assume you get probably a bit, a big task of managing that grant as well as getting the grant. And that means people come along with some of those grants. And so I can see you getting overwhelmed real quickly unless you have support. And so at some point in time, I'm hoping you get the support you need and maybe within the structure of a grant, it allows for some of those things. Or within your community, there are people that reach out to folks that can come in and assist. So I'm, I'm just making a statement. I may be way out of line. I don't, I, that I, and you'll figure out if I don't know, if I know what I'm saying or what I'm not, don't do it publicly, but you know what I'm talking about. And so that's all I'm hoping is that, because uh, these kinds of things can really, they're, they're essential to what we're doing. But also what's essential is the health of our own community to be able to manage these things. Does that make any sense? Okay, so I'm done.
Makes a lot of sense. And that's, that's a critical piece because in some cases, you know, for example, the Safe Schools Grant that um, Jeannie and some other people wrote this summer for us.
Two people, yeah.
Got uh, got on board and has two people in it. That's gonna spearhead those, those changes and those services to to us. It just depends on the grant as whether they allow you to write in uh, leadership. But the issue is if we don't have someone who's focused on that, then it tends to slide off the scale and then just kind of disappears. So absolutely, that accountability is really critical that we have someone who's, who's focused on that.
Well, my concern because of the need going forward is just the fact that we have a grant writer. And don't want to lose the grant writer to the, and I don't want to put it this way because all the minutia after the grant's gotten, uh, and, and the, you know, the critical things we have to do with those grants. So anyway, peace said, peace out. Anybody else have any comments? Guys are pretty quiet. You're worrying me tonight. Okay. Ms. Woods, thank you so much for that presentation. Appreciate it. Superintendent Wallen, thank you. Okay, let's move on in our agenda. Item B, transitions to and from elementary schools and Page Middle School. Uh, Larry Wallen and the rest of your administering staff for the schools.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Candelaria. And I'm gonna, I don't know which one of you is going to lead this. Is it uh, Anne or Mary or Lisa? Okay, Lisa. And they're going to present to you some ideas about transition and where we're headed with that.
So, good evening, Governing Board, President Candelaria, um, Governing Board members, Superintendent Wallen and Cabinet. Thank you for the inquiry about vertical transitions and the opportunity to present um, our transitions to you. I want to make sure first that we are all able to see the screen here. Okay. And um, thank you for giving us this opportunity to present our transition process. Um, as you are guided through this particular presentation, I would like for you to keep in mind um, the state and the national uh, focus and mandates regarding social emotional learning and how instruction, leadership, the culture of our school sites and the types of transitions speak to the varying levels of development, the student development. Um, and how our various plans and what we're going to present to you today um, help to support and address the whole child at any stage throughout their pre-K 12 learning experience in P U S D. There are two charts that I will share with you before I transition to Ms. Warner, the principal of Lakeview Primary, to address the transition between the primary and intermediate schools. One chart that we see here. Here we go. This chart focuses on the psychosocial development. And the second one that you'll see focuses on the cognitive development stages which speak to how a student cognitively conceptualizes the learning experience. Both charts include infancy to early childhood and we understand that um, pre-K is not a part of our presentation this evening. Um, but Ms. Case is very excited to have an opportunity to share with you um, about her E C E program and welcomes that opportunity. Her data will look a little different, but the tools that she uses to measure student psychosocial and cognitive as well as physical development, um, such as teaching strategies gold, the class instrument, the Eckers, which rates the environment, will also speak to the needed uh, transition between the lower levels and the upper levels of the primary learning. Our students do not belong to us in isolation and we are truly seeing throughout the site part, partnership with the leaders, um, a partnership that uh, really takes our students from cradle to college and career in order to build community. Ms. Warner?
Good evening. Um, I'm going to begin with the transition our students make in Page Unified School District when moving from second grade into third grade. As Ms. Covington showed us in a previous graphic, there is a transitional period for students transferring from preschool or the home environment into kindergarten. Um, she also mentioned that we're not addressing that transition today. However, I'd be happy to work with our Page Preschool Director Penny Case. If you'd like us to, we can provide you with specifics of that transition process at a later date. Students attending P U S D move from second grade at Lakeview Primary to third grade at Desert View Intermediate School. Although the transition um, is to a new building, these students are still considered elementary school students. Our current student enrollment data shows that we can anticipate 163 second graders transferring to Desert View for the 2021, 2022 school year. Uh, we can also take a look at our most current student proficiency data for both reading and math. We can see that based on the STAR Renaissance Assessment, we anticipate that approximately 40% of second grade students entering third grade, or that will be entering third grade, are performing at or above grade level. Um, the timeline on the next slide shows the planning process for the transition. Uh, when planning for the transition for our second graders, it's a fairly simple process at this point. Uh, this year due to COVID, the transition events for students and families will be occurring virtually. This month, the second grade teachers are working with their students to develop questions for a Q and A session that will be conducted with a panel of third grade students and teachers. I'm going to hand the presentation over to Mrs. Stahl at this time to provide you with the details of this year's transition plan for second graders who will be entering Desert View Intermediate in the fall.
Good evening, everyone. So Nancy and I met to really discuss um, how to create a level of comfort for um, our second grade students um, coming into Desert View. And so to help our students feel more comfortable with that transition, we decided to create a video tour of the school and, and then also um, schedule a panel discussion. This would get the second grade students exposed to some familiar faces that they may see in our Desert View hall, hallways when they get here. This week, the second graders will prepare questions for the third grade panel and submit them to Desert View by April 2nd. During the week of April 5th, the third graders will prepare answers to those questions. And then April 15th is really considered, I guess, Desert View Transition Day. Um, the second grade teachers will show the video tour to their students. Um, second graders will also participate in the virtual Q and A with the third grade panel. And we also have a scheduled virtual parent night um, from 5:30 to 6:15. That, that parent night um, will include activities that will um, will show the video tour um, to the parents and then will also give information to parents about move on when reading. Just waiting on the next slide. Oh. Okay, so the next piece is um, our fifth grade to sixth grade. Um, the fifth grade demographics, we can expect for the class of 2028, um, there will be approximately 156 students transitioning from um, Desert View to Page Middle School. Elisa, if you could advance that slide. There's the demographics. Um, Superintendent Wallen asked that I share some data with you and one of our data points is from the STAR reading test. Um, or STAR test and the STAR test is um, really their computer adaptive tests in reading and math. Um, and the primary purpose of this test is to determine the level of each student and to measure growth. So you see on here, the percentages on this table show how many students tested at benchmark for each test. And STAR defines benchmark as grade-specific minimum performance levels that students are expected to reach by certain points of the year in order to meet end of the year performance goals. Another data point that we, that I'm sharing with you today is for the, um, from the C F A data. And this is from the B T Common Formative Assessments or C F As. These assessments are five questions and they're in reading and in math. Each C F A assesses one standard at a time and students must receive a four or above to show mastery in that standard. Teachers use these tests to inform their instruction. And the percentages on this table illustrate the average mastery from all of the assessments. And the percentages on this table illustrate the average mastery from all of the assessments within that quarter.
Can we uh? Can we go just, just a comment from pre K all the way through uh, fifth? Uh, and you offered Nancy just that uh, we could hear from Penny. Uh, coming forward with you and your collaboration there to bring the students into your uh, into the K through two. Uh, and um, also you, I know you and Mary have been talking quite a bit. Uh, and I look at STAR data, how alarmed should I be? Or should I be?
Um, you know, there's, there has been um, a huge gap in learning as we know. Um, with the COVID slide and that's a national um, thing. So I mean, it's alarming on all of our ends.
Yep. Well, here, here's, and again, I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't intend on putting anybody else, but I, I know and I, I've, I've uh, very aware of what's going on nationally with all of these things. It's tough. So at some point in time, maybe after this year, uh, we, when things, hopefully I get back to what is a normal. How much are we going to have to deal with the lag? Because we're advancing kids, uh, you know, grade levels. And so how much, how much of that lag are we, are we really dealing with? And then the other group I really think about are, are um, you know, special needs kids and those kinds of things because they're not getting even uh, what, what most of the kids are getting virtually and. Cause they, they normally or some of them have to be literally in, in class. To be, to really get any kind of educational benefit. And so I'm concerned about the equity thing and. Uh, because of COVID, a lot of those answers are, are obvious, you know, but a rhetorical question, but. Uh, maybe towards the end of the year, we, we kind of get after those evaluations and those things are done, we can come and, and just, you know, talk to us about. You know, where are we really at with these kids? Where are these kids? And what are we going to be starting with next year? You know what I mean? Does that make sense?
That makes a lot of sense, Mr. Candelaria. And actually, we should be very concerned about the achievement level of our students. COVID or not, uh, the pattern goes back for, uh, and I always go back three years. We are showing uh, levels of achievement that can get a lot better. And so by putting in place that pathway to a B district and moving forward with, with BT and teaching the standards, because that's the value. Of bringing our grade up, the value is lying in teaching the standards. And if we can hit that and do that well and show those results, if you go back to that slide, which showed those uh, CFA scores. You see a, a major increase there.
Yeah.
Where that, that, at the third quarter, if, if the, the uh, numbers are correct, then at the third quarter. We've got forty percent of our kids mastering uh, the, the CFAs. And so given a projection of fourth quarter, we should be above fifty. Which is awesome. We should be above fifty. And so we still have a lot more to go. Uh, and we need to identify um, what those needs are and move forward. And that's where the balancing act comes in. But we've made tremendous progress in both reading and in math. Uh, and I can tell you that in. Uh, math took the hardest hit this year in the national data in terms of uh, growth. Reading is, is a little bit ahead of math in that respect. Um, but we can, we have data that shows that. And so moving forward is the critical piece. Mani. Maintaining that pathway to that B district is critical.
Right. Well, and I did, I did see that uh, in the fifth grade where actually math was, was leading. In terms of uh, you know, the, the reading and all else kind of thing. So that's, that's, that's good. Uh, again, please understand uh. Uh, there's not a lack of work and uh, am that, why am I getting echoes? So we're not. Anyway, um, just wanted to really make sure you understood. I'm not, I'm not being critical one bit. I, I, I can't imagine. Everyone going through this whole situation and, and mastering uh, another uh, type of teaching along with in, in, in uh, in classroom instruction. Uh, just my, my concept is the fact that if we're not, if our kids are, are not performing at the, at the little league level. Uh, we want to do everything we can. And I know you guys are uh, to give us a, a real chance that those guys reading when they're in third grade and those kinds of things, but. I'm just, I was just asking for just to, at the end of the year, just having a real uh, honest assessment of these kids. What, what does the next level mean for them? Uh, and I know that, I know that's what you guys are talking about. And so. Uh, I would appreciate that at some point towards the end of the year, but I, I do appreciate all the work that's going on and. And I, I, I have been really excited about seeing the progress we're hearing in middle school and. And uh, high school and those kinds of things and, and the, the improvement. And we do see that in this data here. So again, I hope you guys understand what I'm talking about.
And, and I do. And I think that's really important to say that because the, the question is going to be, how are we growing kids in the twenty twenty-one school year? How are we getting them ready? Uh, the gap at the beginning of the year remained the same from fall to winter to spring. And that's what we're looking at. And so you can see that the gap does not remain the same. It's beginning to be addressed. And I think as we go into year two of our beyond textbooks implementation. Our CFAs, our additional staff development and our highly committed teachers, that's what really makes the difference is our teachers. And then they're doing the best they can in the circumstances. Virtual learning is, has basically kicked our butt. I'm sorry to say, and it's done that to everyone throughout the state.
Everybody.
Right now and grades four through eight, uh, you know, nationally, the, it's two percentage points down. Uh, reading is, is the one that's taking the hardest hit. Uh, math is the most difficult to sustain because it's sequential. You know, in order to be able to add, you gotta be able to do these things. And so assessing that gap and looking at it's what we've been focused on and where we're headed. With how we're going to address that and make it happen. And so are we growing at a normal rate or are we getting a larger? Gap or how are we analyzing that and moving it forward? And those are the questions we're, we're constantly battling.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Chuck?
Yes, I'd just like to comment too as well, um, regarding. This, and I know I've talked to Larry and uh, Bob about, you know, my um, concerns regarding the uh, transition from elementary to middle school and. You know, uh. You know, I have a student that's going into eighth grade this year and uh, you know, I know that he's struggled ever since he, you know, elementary. From uh, kindergarten all the way up to now. But I know he hasn't gotten this far without, you know, parent involvement. So, you know, he's a. Maintaining a B average, but that's due to parent involvement. And I know that a lot of students, not just my son, but you know, all the students that come to school here. Probably struggling just as much as he is or has been. And you know, the COVID situation were, didn't, you know. Impacted it more, I should say. And uh, you know, um. And I know that the transition from elementary to middle school, you're going to have fifth graders that uh, you know, really struggled. And they're going to be going into sixth grade and how, uh, how's that gonna? Impact on their education, you know? Uh, these are a lot, you know, questions, maybe concerns and some of it might sound like I'm complaining about, you know. The way things have been going in the last, you know, five years as far as um, student success goes, you know? Um, but those are uh, things that I'm thinking about right now as far as transitioning goes and student success. For all the students.
And Chuck, you're hitting one of the biggest issues that we face right now. Uh, that my teachers face is that parent involvement because it's taking on a whole new, whole new, you know.
Well, I think it's, I think it's almost in, well, I can't say it's impossible, but it is a challenge for parents to. Uh, you know, sit down with their students every night and help them with homework or help them to better understand the homework. Assignment that's been given to them because I'll tell you, you know, the packets that were sent home during spring break. You know, my son struggled with them. He still has, you know, a challenge, you know, to do those assignments, uh, mainly in math. I think that's probably the most challenging of all classes is uh, math. So, um. You know, I, 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 I know for sure that the students that go on, that are going to be going into sixth grade are going to really have a, a difficult time and. Right now, we really need to think about those students that are going to be going into sixth grade. And that's what I mean when we say transition. When they go into si- uh, sixth grade, you know, are they just going to be? Jump right in and start doing assignments? You know, I think that's what happened with my son when he went to sixth grade, you know, I think it was two or three weeks before they. Start doing assignments and he was, you know, struggling right off the bat and then, you know, in a number of his classes, but you know, like I said. If parents aren't, you know, there for their students. You know, that, that's going to be even more challenging for those students to be uh, to succeed and be successful. And I don't know how we can better help, you know, students if, or, you know, parents to, you know, do their part as well, you know, it's just a challenge.
Well, the number one thing right now we can do is get them back in school and get this last fourth quarter having a whole high value for us in terms of their student achievement. Uh, the, the COVID has, you know, challenged us dramatically, challenged parents. Uh, I constantly talk about creating that living classroom in your home. Uh, now it's not just coming to school, which was easy for parents to, to, to work with. Now it's, you gotta turn on the computer, turn on the light, create the environment. All those decisions that were made at school are now back on the parents. And so once we get them back in school, we can have a greater impact. And we appreciate those parents that were successful with this. But as we know, we have some kids who, who lacked that parental uh, direction and support, but that's what we're, we're working toward is moving everyone forward. And move them forward successfully.
Thank you.
Thank you all for those uh, questions. Um, I'm going to jump right into the transition from intermediate to, to um, middle school. And I do want to say in response to your inquiry, um, that um, we do know that there's a new sheriff in town. And we have a, a new focus on beyond textbooks. All of our site leaders currently are aligned to the um, implementation. We are focused on making sure that our students um, are having uh, are holding up to the beyond textbooks framework. Um, and that we are focused on those essential standards um, all the way from K all the way up. So. Looking from this level down at the difference that I see already in the CFA data that's coming up to us, I'm very optimistic. Because even in this pandemic, um, to see the percentages that we have, even in the middle of the pandemic. Um, for CFAs are higher than they have been in the past. Um, from what we're looking at, fifth graders coming up to us. Um, so we do know that, that this situation has caused um, some difficulty, but we also know that. Uh, all of our hearts of the site leaders are really intent on making sure that our students learn. And uh, that's when we talk about the fact that we all own all of our kids. They're not just Mary's kids. I'm getting Mary's kids or Mary's getting Nancy. Nancy's students or kids, but they're all of our kids and tightening up our instructional practices. So that we see over the course of the next uh, two to three years that we actually see that product at the high school. Um, as a reward for, for the hard work that our staff, our teachers are really putting in to make sure that we have tier one uh, rigorous instruction. So our transition at the middle school, we actually start talks across the board um, about transitions in the fall. And so you can see from looking at this particular uh, slide. Um, that some of the things that, some of the conversations that have already been had uh, between the counselors at the middle school, the counselors. At uh, the intermediate school as well as preparing and having transition meetings with our administration. Ms. Stahl, um, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Robbins met to actually start to line out what the transition was going to look like. So you'll see the, the different uh, levels. We also uh, conduct a virtual uh, elective fair as well as a virtual tour. Usually we give the students the physical tour, um, and there's talk, we're going to see what that will be look like as we get closer. Uh, to the date, but currently right now it is a virtual tour for the students of the school to introduce them to the school and some of their teachers. And as well as introducing our parents to our site, to our counselors. Um, through uh, a parent discussion with our counselors. Our virtual skylight is also held and it will be held in, in May um, that you see there. And then our final data. Um, that we will get from the intermediate, immediate school will be um, closer to May the fourteenth. And what we do with this data is we help to make sure that our classes are. Are integrated, that we have students in the appropriate reading support class if they need a particular reading support class. That takes us to our ninth grade transition at the middle.
A question, please.
Yes.
Okay, so two years ago, I attended one of those parents, um, parent, what did you call them?
The, the parent, parent night?
Yes.
The virtual parent night.
It, yeah, okay. So that's going to be virtual this year, but it was in person two years ago and um. I would hope that when you guys do that parent night, um, I assume the kids participate in that as well. If you could focus on the positive things of going to middle school rather than the upcoming possible behavioral challenges. I remember going to parent night and it was quite, um. Hmm, I want to try to stay positive, but um. I walked away thinking, hmm, I'm not so sure. I want my child going to middle school and I would like to, and I don't know how it was last year. But I'd like us to focus on positive sides of middle school. What can you learn? You know, how are you going to grow? How? Wha- what kind of, what kind of great things are at Page Middle School? I mean, often kids um, expect greater freedoms the older they get rather than, you know. Getting locked down. So my kids have commented many times. I love going to high school because I feel so much more freedom over there. Um, might not be the case in next few years, but um, I'm, well, I guess my point is. Can you please focus on the positive things that are happening at middle school and maybe not so much on consequences of bad behaviors?
Well, I, I do want to say that I apologize that you had that experience. Um, if you can recall, I wasn't there that evening, but I will take responsibility as a leader. We do have a script that we. Um, have and it's a transition program and a transition script. Um, we show this, the uh, there is a video that we show the parents about what to look for. Um, and so thank you very much for that, that feedback. And we will ensure that that experience will be um. More pleasurable and actually reflect the, the collaborative culture of our campus. And one of the reasons why we'll, we'll make sure that we focus on that is because our vision is to make sure that we are um, building relationships to create that positive environment. And make sure that students are academically, socially and cognitively um, ready. For eighth grade, it looks like we will be transitioning about one hundred and seventy-one students to the ninth grade. Um, and our data for this year, we blocked it up by um, our NWA data and then our CFA data is shown as in uh, semesters. So our uh, data for this year, our fall reading and math, you can see the percentages there. Currently, we are excited um, about the return of students to our campus. Um, and hopefully that we can capture more of our students in our data. Our CFA data um, for first semester, the average for reading, you see there, the average for math. You also see there for our eighth graders. And then we are currently in second semester. And so towards the end of second semester, we'll have. A percentage for you as far as what the average ended up being for second semester. And now, yes.
I'm sorry, I have a question. The last few slides that you just shared are not in our packet. How many students from eighth grade are moving to the middle or I'm sorry, high school?
Uh, we have one hundred and seventy-one currently on our um, enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
And then we prepare for our students to transfer to Page High School. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Martin.
Good evening, everyone. Are you ready to be a sand devil? Because that's what happens when you go to ninth grade. So we have a month by month timeline that we follow each year. So we have a month by month timeline that we follow each year. And although you see September and October are missing from this timeline, um September and October are our background months where we make sure that our course of study is current and ready for approval and review and then we prepare our computer systems. So in November of each year, we review our, what we call pre-registration plan uh with the middle school. So we meet with the admin and counseling team to set the exact dates for that timeline. In January, we host an incoming ninth grade parent or student night. I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. In February, we began to go onsite over at the middle school. Our counselors team up with middle school counselors to hold information sessions during their typical skylights that are planned um each month. We also hold transition meetings between middle school and high school staff um specifically considering our subgroups. So our English language learners, our students uh with special education plans. In March, our high school counselors visit and work in middle school classrooms, starting the pre-registration process. Uh, in March, at the end of it, pre-registration closes. Um, in May, we load our requests into the system so that we can create schedules for our students. In July, we have a back to school event at Page High School. That event started uh back in July of twenty eighteen and it really allows us space and time for our families to work with administrators, counselors, other support staff to prepare for the new year. Um, in August, we have typically an onsite ninth grade orientation. This last year we did I run it virtual through a Google Meet. It was very interesting to get to meet our uh freshmen through uh Google Meet, watching them interact in the chat and they haven't seen some of their classmates all summer. So that was pretty cool to be able to still run that, but in a virtual manner. This year, our ninth grade uh parent event was also virtual. We had two of our innovative and creative teachers, Ben Dalton and Megan Moore, created um an interactive PDF. This is what it would look like if it were um on your screen and each of those bit emojis um takes you to a virtual tour of some aspect of our school. So we had um different people introducing themselves. Um, that's me high-fiving the incoming freshman. Uh, my hair is a little shorter then, so might be hard to tell that that's me. Uh, we had our counselors create a video, each of our ninth grade um teachers and staff members uh created a little collage where they introduced themselves. And we tried to think of what we would typically could provide in person and we then tried to record it and provide it virtually. Ms. Covington mentioned that the middle school, Page Middle School, uh currently has a hundred and seventy-one eighth graders. Typically, we get from our outline schools anywhere from thirty to fifty additional ninth graders. So this incoming uh school year, we would be looking at two hundred to two hundred and twenty incoming ninth graders, which is a very typical number. And in the last few years, we've even seen first day of school, first week of school, two hundred and thirty-ish um ninth graders as well. So I did just want to provide a little bit about ninth to post-secondary. I know I was um tagged on at the end, even though you guys might not have been expecting to hear about um the high school more. Um, so our vision here at Page High School is that every graduate is college, career and community ready. And so we have really been taking steps to increase our ability to make that vision come to life. Um, and so some of the things that go on while a student is in high school as they transition to life um and their, their goals after high school um is that we, if you could flip the slide for me, is that we uh recently have entered into a uh partnership, we're working through the details of it with Gear Up through NAU. Um, this provides college and career readiness for all students. Um, and it, and it doesn't um take a, an elective um away from them. So right now, the step that we're taking is each of our seniors has a launch book um and it goes through the steps to prepare for college and career. Um, and our counselors have been utilizing that through advisory lessons as well. We have internships through our work-based learning experiences and right now this is specifically in career and technical education. A couple of years ago, I was able to work with uh Chuck Sharp, the CTE director uh to make sure that we could provide all of our CTE instructors with a cooperative educational endorsement. And that then allows them to provide those work-based learning experiences through internships and that's been really exciting. Uh, we're looking to increase those offerings, not only in career and technical education over the next couple, three years, but also in just other areas um of the academics that we provide our students. We have dual credit courses with our college partners, that's Coconino Community College and Navajo Technical University. Um, and in fact, um in school year nineteen twenty, uh we had seven courses that were dual credited. Um, currently this school year, we have fourteen and we're looking forward to next year having sixteen courses that are dual enrolled with either uh Coconino Community College or Navajo Technical University. And then, of course, we uh provide avenues for community service through National Honor Society, Student Council, Abbott Elective and Service Learning Club uh that's run by um our sponsors here on the campus. And now I think we're going to talk about some possible next steps and we'll start with some elementary ideas.
All right. So in thinking about the next steps, um the first that the first bullet is content-specific teaching. Um, as you know, elementary teachers teach all subjects and so this is the idea that we would utilize teacher's strengths and reteach um it for math and ELA. And this would mean that teachers who experience more success or are stronger in that subject would reteach in their area of strength. Um, this would increase the success of students and grade level standards, um which will obviously help with the transition to the next level. The next bullet is peer mentoring and this is the idea that students would have a peer mentor and then grade level above theirs. So for example, a fifth grade student would have a sixth grade peer mentor. Um, and this would increase student voice and would also help to create a more respectful and trusting environment lending to smooth transitions for students.
Have a question. Uh, this is Charles. Uh, I was just curious on your thoughts as far as if there's an impact regarding student to teacher ratio as far as teaching students, if you have a large class and one teacher and is there an impact there?
Yeah, um, it would seem that um, you know, with fewer students in a classroom, the teacher would be able to um, you know, meet each student at their level um more effectively. However, there is research, um, there's research out there that doesn't really support that. And so, you know, I just, I, I'm, this is my first year at, here at Desert View and we um just know that, that uh the relationships that um teachers have with students is really um very important in terms of student success. Um, and that may or may not depend on the amount of students that a teacher has in a classroom.
Okay.
I just wanted to, to provide insight that um to add to what Mary said. Um, I have this quote in my head from Mr. Wallen that he says often. Uh, what makes the most difference is quality time in front of a quality teacher. So when we have that and it's consistent, we, we would rely on the research that says um our class sizes are appropriate sizes.
Well, I just think I have heard that, you know, especially in elementary, you know, if you have children in first grade, second grade or kindergarten, you know, it's seems to be a little bit more challenging to, you know, get the attention of those students. If, you know, if you have a large class, that's just my thought, you know.
Yeah, those students, the students in the, um, and just to give a little bit of history. Um, so I, I've have experienced leading a school that was pre-K, pre-K three. Um, so we had, we had, we did that transition from uh pre-K to kinder and then also from three to four. Um, the, what we find, and this is going to be an important piece, when you have the opportunity to hear from this case, is there are some environmental rating scales and things that are done at the elementary or the preschool level that help to support students in their transition to kindergarten. And so looking for those same type of patterns, because what happens is when you have students who are first coming into any kind of school environment, they have to really adjust to being able to sit for, for um, if they start with, you know, short increments of time, um, getting to sit for fifteen minutes to be able to, to hear, to understand and then the learning through the play, learning through all of those different uh different things, all of those different opportunities, learning opportunities through regular interaction, social interaction. And so the, the charts that I showed at the beginning with the cycle social skills and also the um the developmental stages um help to support those students transitioning from, from home to school. Um, and so one of the, the, when she has an opportunity to share that, that will also support um how we can transition the students. I do agree that when um if we are able to, to uh to address those needs and the transitions as the students are developing from the lower levels to the higher levels, we will see also a difference in academia as well as in uh social, emotional interaction. Um, but um, it's, it's based on Hattie's work, which I'm pretty sure, um, why I can't speak for her, but but our SATs have done a lot of work on Hattie's work and, and what the effect size is and things that really change the dynamics of not just the classroom environment, but acad- but academics um and the support with academics. And um, that sounds more like what you, information you may, may be looking for. And that would takes, actually, we would need a whole nother board study session to just talk on that because it's so vast and it would really, it would really, um, uh, you'd be surprised the things that really change the dynamics of how quickly and how fast students learn um and that really impact that, that student achievement.
Okay, just one more question for elementary. Um, what is the average classroom size? If, you know, if not, that's okay.
Um, I can speak to Lakeview. In previous years, um kindergarten is typically eighteen-ish, give or take a couple. Um, and first and second grade range anywhere between twenty and twenty-five.
Okay.
And at the K five, uh, I'm sorry, at the three-five level, we average twenty-five students per class.
Okay. Thank you.
So in addition to the two ideas that Mrs. Stahl shared with you for next steps, uh, we also have instructional-specific professional development. Uh, so based on student performance data, data, we're planning to provide additional professional development opportunities for teachers specifically in the areas of reading and writing. The Arizona Department of Education has offered teaching reading effectively and letters training in the past. And so we're looking forward to participating in their upcoming trainings that are geared specifically towards elementary teaching in those areas of literacy. Uh, in addition, we are looking to adopt pre-K five vertical practices, platforms and procedures uh with regards to social, emotional learning. This year, students at Lakeview and at Desert View received weekly social, emotional learning or SEL lessons as part of their specials rotation. Moving forward, we're considering um the sustainment of that implementation based on positive feedback from teachers, families, parents um and students as well. We will also continue to refine our use of our current SEL resources at the K five level uh which is Sanford Harmony and this resource provides daily lessons for teachers to implement throughout the instructional day. And the last bullet um is the adoption of Performance Matters as a Benchmark Assessment Suite. Uh, we're excited about the consideration to adopt this um product. Um, it provides many opportunities um in which we can have access to both academic and behavioral data points for all of our students to help us better support the whole child.
When it comes to possible next steps for secondary, um, some of the things that we looked at was definitely using a peer mentoring uh system. We had the opportunity through, to make some connections with high school through avid peer teach tutors, um but really expanding that using our eighth graders to, to act as guiding coaches for our sixth grade incoming um sixth graders and then extending our partnerships with the high school. One of the things that we found that this does is that it builds student agency and so student agency when you uh look more at Hattie's work, that's one of the things that indicators that actually really pushes and, and increases the level of student achievement. And uh, we also have, it, it builds pure accountability. The other ideas uh that I will speak of is uh making sure that we have instruction and culturally responsive, specific professional development. Um, we have as a district had training in trauma-informed practices. We have had training in um culturally relevant practices. Um, but it's, it's good to have those pieces of training, but if we don't look at how to culturally respond um to respond to culturally appropriately, um then that is another area that once we are able to do that, that will also impact. And when I speak of culture, um, a lot of times we, we focus on the ethnicity um and, and racial groups and ethnicity, ethnic, ethnos. Um, but culture is also transcends age. Those are my age group that has a different culture than uh twenty years removed from me above or below. Um, and so there are many things that encompass culture, including our worldview. And so um, making sure that we receive that particular training and that we are understanding, our, our collaborative team of teachers understand how to uh respond um appropriately and to interweave the cultural aspect within our lessons. Um, it makes a difference and we see that happening in some of our classes across the district already. Ms. Martin?
Few other ideas, uh, we have about next steps for secondary um is one to utilize a Gear Up partnership and the tools that come along with that to prepare our students and our parents uh for Page High School and that would start in the seventh grade. Um, I've included on the last slide of this, some additional resources about Gear Up uh for your later review. Uh, we can always come back to another study session to talk more about NAU Gear Up. Um, the next one has to do with something you heard from uh Ms. Warner as well, adopt Performance Matters as a Benchmark Assessment Suite. Uh, this will allow lots of uh new opportunities for data-driven instruction um and being able to address student learning needs before the end of the school year. The last one that I have as a possible next step is for us to reimagine the dean of students position uh to address school-wide SEL needs. Uh, there is research that indicates that standalone SEL learning uh might not be uh the way to go and instead we need to be thinking about how to embed it in the culture of the school, the instructional practices, the way that the school um is managed and runs.
That concludes our um presentation, our transition presentation um for you all. And once again, I've put up the, the different graphics so that you can look at and see um how each of our schools support the students in their areas of development, whether it's psychosocial or cognitive, as we are also impacting and planning for. whether it's psychosocial or cognitive, as we are also impacting and planning for student achievement. Um, because these go hand in hand. Is there any more questions at this time regarding our transition plans?
I have a question for Ann Martin. He had mentioned, let's see, one of the slides. So you ended with the graduation as, you know, the end to end your, um, presentation. How many students do we currently have or a percentage of students that are graduating this year?
Uh, well, right now we're assessing the amount of students who are on track to graduate. We actually just had another meeting about that yesterday. I don't have a percentage for you. I just have numbers in my mind. Um, but I can get that for you. I'll put it in our, my next board report. That way you can see that in writing.
Sounds good. Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else? I, I'm just gonna tell you how excited I am on the heels of uh, one of your last presentations regarding Avid. And, uh, and now, uh, because we've talked before about being uh, systematic around our approach from pre, pre K all the way to twelve. And then I want to tell you that I'm so excited to hear you guys and what you're, what you're wrapping your head around and how your staffs are responding and those kind of things. And so I think it's really exciting where we're going. Um, because like I said, once, once everyone gets focused on that one concept, all of these are our kids. And I appreciate these kind of presentations at our board meeting because it keeps us focused on the same thing. And I think that's really where our head has to be. Uh, that was the first critical response from, from Coach Wallen that we got in his audit. And I said, hey, you gotta audit us. And the first thing he says, you know what? You guys aren't focused on your goal. So you better do it. And I, and he said, look at all your past work-study sessions. And I don't see too many things to talk about student achievement. And so I want to thank you for that. And, uh, yeah, just great job up and down the line, Penny. Uh, Gats Nancy, Mary, Lisa, and, uh, thank you so much, Ms. Martin as well. So let's just keep it up and, and the discussion regarding, I'm glad to hear that we're focused on beyond textbooks and, and, uh, and making sure everybody's, is tooled and trained and ready to go with that. So once again, thank you. I see so many nice strands and inner strands in those, what where I used to call them islands. And, uh, so I really applaud you. Thank you guys so much. Anything else? Okay, again, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, we're going to go ahead and move on uh, to item number C, and that's the presentation, uh, regarding the Auditor General's Report. Uh, and Vindi Wurhandi, uh, you are on. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Wallen. And I share my screen with you. Today, we're going to talk about the data from the Arizona. This report, um, talks about, um, our district spending in comparison to our peer groups in the entire state of Arizona. And in this cost analysis, uh, we are considered a medium, uh, large school district. In the first slide, we few, uh, we can see that our instruction, um, spending is at a fifty-one point two percent and compared to our peer average of, uh, fifty-four point two percent spending on instruction. And overall, if you look at our classroom spending, it's about sixty-six point six percent compared to the sixty-nine point three percent, uh, classroom spending in the state of Arizona. And in this slide, you'll see, um, we have our lowest instructional reported in fiscal year twenty seventeen, which was about forty-four point eight percent. Now in fiscal year twenty, we are at fifty-one point two percent. We've increased our, um, spending over the years. In the next slide, you see that, um, compared to our peer groups, we are on the lower end, uh, when it comes to our instructional spending, but we are not far off, uh, from the peer group average of fifty-four point two percent. And here I put together a snapshot for you, um, on what our instructional spending would just look like, um, over the, um, last few years, uh, from, um, fiscal year twenty thirteen till today, we've increased our instructional spending, as you can see, and, um, overall, um, though our, um, classroom spending, um, in fiscal year thirteen, it was sixty-nine point four percent, uh, but now we're at a sixty-seven point six percent. Um, there are various factors that come into play, and it's mostly because of the, um, reduction in the support, um, student support, uh, spending and the instruction support. Talk about that. So, um, if you look at our non-classroom spending, you'll see, um, our administration costs, um, from twenty thirteen till now, it's increased, uh, to about, um, nine point nine percent. And our plant and operation spending and, uh, our transportation costs, uh, have gone up due to, um, in this fiscal year twenty, that is mainly because of our, um, COVID-related, uh, expenses that, um, we've had. And if I go to the next slide, it shows you that our per pupil, uh, spending by operational, um, area, um, that is, you'll see the total per pupil spending is about twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty for fiscal year twenty. Uh, this is mainly due to the pandemic-related expenditures we've incurred, uh, during fiscal year twenty. And, you know, and here I've, uh, put together what most of these, um, but what these, uh, what the descriptions of, uh, operational spending entails. So, um, it talks about instructional spending, what those items are, and also non-instructional spendings and what each category, uh, entails. And in this report, this also gives you a description of what our non-operational spending, um, areas are. In, uh, our operational measures relative to our peer averages, if you look, you'll see that, um, it, in the areas of administration, plant operation, transportation, our costs are noted as very high. Compared to our peer average and the state average. So in this section, I put together a snapshot of, um, what, um, how our costs lined up from the past years. Um, so you have, you see a trend of how we increased over the years, um, uh, due to various reasons. Um, so that this slide, um, shows you a detail, um, of what each year looked like. And in this slide, we talk about, um, they're comparing, uh, percentage point changes in spending operational areas compared to fiscal year twenty fifteen. So that shows then in fiscal year twenty, we have increased our instructional spending by two point five percent and our student support spending increased about by about point two percent and, um, does a decrease in our instruct and support spending of about two point five percent. And, um, our administration, um, spending increased about one point three percent compared to, uh, fiscal year, uh, twenty fifteen. And our planned operations, food services and transportation, uh, spending, uh, were decreased by about point one, five and nine percent, uh, respectively. And, um, the next section, it talks about, um, our COVID nineteen-related, um, grant spending. As of June thirtieth, we only had about two hundred, uh, two hundred thousand, um, at the end of June thirtieth, that ties to the federal relief grants, even though we have other, um, areas we had to spend money, uh, on COVID. So in the, in this slide, they talk about our average teacher salary, um, compared to, um, the state average, uh, teacher salary. We are not far off. Um, we're pretty close to what the state average, um, shows at this, um, uh, we're at about fifty-three thousand dollars average teacher salary. Um, in the next section, they talk about, um, our average years of teacher experiences. Um, we show, uh, nine point seven years, uh, in fiscal year twenty per, um, our teachers and students per teacher is at nineteen point six students per teacher in fiscal year twenty. So, and also it talks about percentage of teachers in the first three years, uh, we are at seventeen percent, um, as you can see. And that brings, concludes our presentation today. If you have any questions for me.
I'll, I'll just ask a question. When you, when we look at, uh, the spending by operational area, uh, and it says from fifteen to twenty, twenty was your measure. Instruction in improvement of two point five or increase of two point five percent. And then the other part was the instruction support two point five percent, uh, less. Um, I was more interested in the instruction support. What, what is that made of?
So that is made out of, um, I think it's our, um, uh, it talks about salaries and benefits for our attendant clerks, social workers, counselors, nurses, uh, speech pathologists, uh, and other costs related to support services for students. And what it was in that, uh, doc now.
So that's where we've lost, uh, any specific area? I mean, because you're talking about several areas that add to that instructional support.
So I think we, um, didn't have a couple of counselors in our team. Probably that may have in fact impacted, um, the, um, expenditure, uh, through the low percentage of the expenditure, um, in last fiscal year. Yeah.
Okay, I may just come talk to you a little bit, just so I can see some of that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'll be more than happy to share details with you.
You know, and there's obvious things with regard to plant operations and those kind of things that would help us quite a bit. So I, we do have it on the map, I'm sure, because of the two hundred and seventy-three square foot per student. A lot of building space, a lot of, like grass, various things like that, but. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anything from any of the other board members? Yes, Sandra.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, tell me, um, what if any, um, actions are gonna be taken based on this Auditor's General Report?
Good question. Um, we have not, Mr. Wallen and I will sit down and look into those things and send you a report, um, of what that would look like. We have not made any plans yet.
You said you and who else?
Mr. Wallen.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, well, I know from these kind of reports, uh, always this becomes some of the, uh, I would suspect some of the structure that's used when you start talking about budgets and budget reductions and increases and various other things where we have lax and where we have high areas that are, that kind of stick out. So anyway, all right. Any other comments from the board members?
Harry, I don't know if you were here at the time. Um, when did Mr. Varner start? And I just want to kind of pencil this in as far as looking at the instructional spending percentage.
Um, so I think Mr. Warner started, uh, in fiscal year twenty fifteen, if I'm not mistaken. Yep.
Varner? Yes. Okay.
Okay. Are we good? All right, let's go ahead and move on to item number D, uh, Athletic Director District Events Proposal, uh, Superintendent Wallen.
Thank you. I would ask you to draw two circles in front of you if you have paper there. I don't know, Lynn, if everyone has paper, but in one of the circles I would put immediate needs and one of the circles I put ongoing needs. And when you look at that report and listen to Mr. Kendall Arias' comments, one of the things we need to look at is facilities and how we're using all that. So what I have put together is a discussion piece on what we possibly could do about this. And would you put a thumbs up if you can see my screen pathway to a B district? Got it? Okay. And this is just conceptual. And so this is saying, okay, this is something that we need to look at. As I've been here, um, since July one on, as a superintendent, one of the things I'm consistently occupied with is facilities. And we have awesome facilities. Um, the one piece that, that obviously needs attention is the swimming pool, which is sitting over there, uh, and that kind of thing. But so I said, okay, wait a minute now. Uh, one of my old mentors, um, actually used to be superintendent here years ago, said, in life, what you resist persists. In life, what you resist persists. So what he means is that when you're resisting something, being chubby and you don't address it, it, you just stay being chubby. But if you address that issue, then things can happen. And unfortunately, I have not addressed being less chubby. Uh, I keep fighting with my doctor about a label about being chubby and that kind of stuff. So I'm looking around at the facilities and I'm listening to all the different comments and statements about facilities and say, wait a minute. It's very difficult for school districts to get rid of buildings and facilities. And so, um, that kind of resistance maybe not be, may not be the way we want to go. And so with that COVID nineteen challenges, we're going through major changes and I want to add the possibility of another major change to build on that. I propose that, uh, we are facility-rich. Okay, I'm not going to resist that. We are facility-rich. Even if the pool's down, we're still facility-rich. So we are facility-rich and we need to turn our facilities into a dynamic part of our presence, of Page Unified School District's presence. And it's, and then some people will sit there and say, well, that's taking us back twenty years ago when I was here. Yes, that is taking us back twenty years ago. Back then, we had a director of community schools. We had an awesome community schools program. The man's name was Steve Childs and he was just fantastic and how he ran things. The pool was functional all the time. Everything worked because we had someone in charge of those events and looking at how to make that a dynamic presence. We had all kinds of things going on. So I'm proposing that we develop a model that forms a, a long-term partnership. And first I want to get uh, your thoughts from the board about moving out and beginning to develop a partnership with the city of Page, Covenant Community College, Northern Arizona, community-based nonprofits, health and wellness services to expand our events. You know, when I was here before, we had an awesome band. We had an awesome choir. We had an awesome orchestra. Um, I mean, there were, there were, there were waiting lists on the orchestra. And so we were constantly having things going on in the CAB. It was a, it was dynamic. It was well utilized. It was well maintained and stuff. Well, right now, COVID giving what it is, we don't have those things going on. And one of the things we don't have is someone in charge of that. Look at the swimming pool. We don't have someone in charge of the swimming pool. So what I'm saying is let's look at our existing resources and let's leverage our social and institutional capital and reach out to partners and develop partnerships and let's build a, uh, program where we become the hub of community events. So instead of being exclusionary and saying, no, no, we want to become in. What if we became, I saw a circle the other day called the grand circle. I'm sure all of you have seen that, right? So what if we became the center of the grand circle and in our So what if we became the center of the grand circle and in our ability to recruit events into our community? Not only would we, as a school district, benefit by beginning to use our facilities in some additional ways, but we'd also begin to benefit because we would be generating income for the community, uh, the city and those partners that we wanna put together. So what I'm proposing is that we build synergy through a collective leadership and expanded learning, wellness supports, family and community engagement. We begin to build that program. And I wanna use existing resources because I don't wanna commit huge amounts of resources until we make this work. So I'm asking that the board give consideration to a director of athletics and community events. And I've talked to, obviously, Ernie about this, about adding this piece in there and looking at what our existing staff is. So rather than fighting our facility issue, I think we need to pivot. We need to respond to the challenge. And we need to capitalize on the opportunities presented by having such great facilities. I mean, what school district has, you know, in Northern Arizona, a C A B, not much. What school district has two full-size football fields out there? What school district has two tracks? What school district has baseball fields, fields down below? I mean, we've got all kinds of stuff that we can use, but we need to increase the usage. Well, that's gonna take someone to be out there creating those events and enticing those usages come in. I kinda have a dream about being like N A U, the Northern Regional Training Center for, uh, uh, athletes, uh, that are gonna go across the world. And so maybe we can reach out and begin to build relationships through the city, get our own internal relationships going here and how it's gonna benefit the entire Page community. And then reach out and begin to say, wait a minute, you wanna run, you wanna do track, uh, cross-country training, come to Page. You wanna do basketball, come to Page. You wanna do this. Some of the things that we used to have in place, uh, we wanna have the swimming pool back up and running, all these pieces put together, but at no expense to our district budget, to our taxpayers' budget. So we, we need to shift our efforts so that we can begin to minimize the, the instructional, the financial impact, as you saw in the graphs that were charted there. And begin to look at what can we, what kind of events and activities can we create to make this happen? As an example, um, in, uh, when I was superintendent in Penon, and I don't like to tell when I was stories, but I had a super, uh, transportation director that was unbelievably awesome. And he decided one day that he was gonna ride his, uh, dirt bike on campus. And then that generated interest. Next thing you know, there's like a dozen kids following him with dirt bikes. Next thing you know, we have a competition team that's going to dirt bike races all over Northern Arizona, uh, going to Aztec, to, uh, Shiprock, all these different places racing dirt bikes. Then what happened is in Penon, we all of a sudden had once a month dirt bike races in the back lot. And we were having all, I mean, hundreds of people come in. It was an amazing event, all spearheaded by my transportation director. We then turned that into a C T E program for small engines. And we've got C T E grants to buy those kids' toolboxes so they could work on their bikes. And I even see some of those kids today out there, uh, who are now, are obviously adultses. One guy was, um, and I was in, um, Cracker Barrel the other day, came over and said, hey, Mr. Wallen, it's me. I'm so-and-so. Remember me? And of course, you know, you gotta pull down the mask, say, tell me your name and say, oh, yeah. He said, well, my son's on the high school basketball team. Wow, okay, gosh, thirty years ago, that's a long time. So we want to begin to build those kind of relationships. What I said, let's look at what our existing resources are and what we could commit and then how to fund that. So I said, let's take our director of athletics and move him into a director of athletics and events. Well, he's already got an existing staff that we can repurpose and add more time to. So we've got an administrative assistant at the middle school that works with athletics. We've got an administrative assistant at the high school that worked with athletics, and we have C, a C A B coordinator. So we could commit this many positions to another strand of relating to what that would look like. So it'll be focused on administering the athletics. Intermurals, I wanna see a much more developed interscholastic program at middle school and an intermural program at K three, or sorry, three, five. Uh, getting the cultural arts building back up and getting those presentations going, getting the, the orchestra and the band and the choir and all these things going that we should have. And forming relationships with those community people in town who have different organizations where they do this as well. Putting it together and support and increase our community presence. If we get twenty-first century community learning centers, uh, then that would be another way to come in and support that. So what I'm revise, requesting the board to consider and give me some feedback on now so that I can prepare for the next board meeting is I'm revising the job description of the high school athletic director and expanding his duties and time worked, of course. And focus on developing school-community partnerships, uh, enhance existing school-based services, delivery models and resources and service gaps based on the needs of schools. And this is events happening. Now, this is not going into the school and say, I'm now taking over the basketball program or I'm going into school taking over the choir program. No. This is about helping create all those events that would make that happen. Uh, and I've noticed as I've been here throughout the summer that there's a lot of different kinds of events take place on land that we own. That we build this team up and we put them together and then we, we begin to plan, organize and promoting events to bring more funds into our district through the, the community school concept. And begin to organize that and reach out and make that happen. So, um, what I'm proposing is that we repurpose these positions or add to them, I guess, add to their responsibilities and look at how we're gonna do that and begin to build unique community-based initiatives as a solution to our facility issue. So that if we can shift some of those responsibilities and some of the funding over to generating its own revenues, then we have an opportunity to reduce that cost. That's in a nutshell. Um, where it is, I just envision all kinds of things happening in terms of, uh, tournaments and competitions and uh, the cultural arts really, cultural arts building really beginning to use, um, and swinging a, a place to go. So your thoughts, ideas, concepts, that's a proposal I would give you to help, um, move us into the future. And it's, it's gonna have shifting priorities and it's gonna have challenges, obviously. First, we need to build those partnerships with the city and on in our community, the community colleges, and then begin to move forward. If the board sees that there's some value in this.
Board members.
I just wanna know how much it's gonna extra, I guess, and where's the funding coming from? Gonna cost for, how much is this position gonna cost us extra to fund?
These positions already in existence. There'll be some additional funding because of increased responsibilities.
Mr. Wallen, I, it sounds like a good idea, I think, um, considering our current situation. Um, you know, what you just described, I think is um, the morale in the community at home and, you know, the things that we've faced over the years. You know, in the military, we call it M W R. Mor- uh, morale, welfare and recreation, you know, and, um, and that's what it comes down to is, you know, how do we boost the morale currently, you know, in this situation and the state that we're in? And I think that's gonna be taken over time, you know, considering, you know, uh, uh, progress with vaccinations and, you know, so, so minimizing social distancing and that sort of stuff. But, you know, overall, I think it's a, it's a great idea to, you know, really boost the morale within the community because I can tell you that many families and, um, are probably more reclused than they ever been before because, uh, due to the situation with COVID, you know, I, I can say that my kids, they stay home ninety-five percent of the, said of the time. Uh, you know, just because of, you know, maintaining that social distance other than going to school. And I know they don't, they don't like being at home. Uh, you know, they wanna get out and do things. Um, and I think that if we open up these opportunities, you know, it'll probably get them more engaged because, you know, I'll tell you, my son, uh, I ask him every day how school was and he'll say, Dad, it's boring. Or, or it sucks, you know, because it's just the same thing every day. So, uh, you know, the, find a better way to engage the community positively and boost morale, you know, definitely might be helpful. That's my thought.
Anybody else? Well, I'll, I'll jump in. Um, I get excited about stuff like this. I know, I know, I know what happens here in the summer, COVID or no, no COVID. I know where our kids go, many of them go in the summer times to do all of these kind of things, COVID or no COVID. We put on thousands of miles, uh, to go to various places and I've always felt that this could be a destination in terms of some of those, uh, type of activities. I've always been impressed with the fact that we get a, a world-class drum corps and flag corps to come to Page in the middle of the summer. And those guys are relentless from seven in the morning till the evening, and then they put on community events for us. And it's a world-class outfit. And, and like I said, uh, uh, we've had intergovernmental agreements, so you see kids on the field regardless of what anything else is going on. But when you get, get down to this, events coordinators can really see, uh, and have the time to, to really see the possibilities. And in terms of costs, uh, with, with most of those things, uh, those generate their own synergy. And, uh, and they, and, and the other part that is, is that you didn't talk about is once you have to start at least a program, take a step-by-step approach. The people that'll jump in will be your chamber of commerce and will be all your community, uh, folks, the ones that see the possibility of bringing something other than the balloon event to, to Page and, and be a little more consistent with that. And and we, we do know, you know, the pool, uh, the, the reason it's still where it's at and, and where, with where we're at, I, it costs an awful lot of money just to have a pool sit there. And so, and once it gets, once it got condemned and various things like that, then it's gonna take a lot, a lot of horsepower to get that thing back in operational. There's no doubt about it. And, um, anyway, I don't wanna talk specific about pool, but I, I, I think there's some real merit to, to that. And I don't, I, I think I'd, I'd almost like to see an exploratory thing, once, a exploratory piece before we go out. Get a, get some plans in place and take up a couple, few events that, that the community would get excited about and then bring them on board to say, hey, we'd really like to see that. And I think I'd like to see that initially. I think, I think that's, it has merit. And, um, but I'd like to see partners that would say, hey, yeah, we would really support this. And so I think that would be kind of the first step is, is say, hey, we're interested in doing this. This is where we wanna go with it. This is how we could potentially commit and resource to. And then just see, see where the community is. Because ultimately, it's, the Page community also will benefit from it. The hotels, restaurants, all of those kind of things. So just my thought. I think it has merit.
Thank you.
I'll just say, my gosh, just sitting here listening to you, Larry, I'm just excited. Is there some way that we can come up with some sort of a survey? Or I like what Bob said in regards to starting maybe one or two programs and build on that and get the community involved. Or would it be better to go out and come up with some sort of a tool to see the interest in what different kinds of activities that you just mentioned? Just to peek back on their own ideas on what they can bring and how they see it. I guess it's a survey that might be intact. I don't know.
Yes, I think so. Uh, if the board is, uh, um, if the board is, is, um, okay with this idea, one of the things I'd like to do is approach, um, I can get Mr. Richards and approach the city and talk to them about, because they have a marketing department, they have
Yes.
economic development. And they have the, that kind of expertise that we don't have in putting something like this together and, and, and approach them and then even some businesses. But I could see even a, a, um, uh, a, a monthly board of directors meeting, so to speak, something like that. A governing group from the community that's gonna help reach out to all these different organizations and bring them in and, and find things that we can bring here and do, you know, um, and how we can tap into that and, and then tap into the funding revenues. It's not that we host the motocross team, but that we facilitated and rent our facilities or lease our facilities to those organizations that wanna get out there and do something. And, um, you know, I could even see basketball camps right now. We have a, you know, world-class basketball teams, uh, boy, boys and girls. Uh, what can we capitalize on that and, and bring competitions here in the summer and games and activities? And I know we used to do that. And Bob, I'm, you, I know you were here when I was here before. We used to do those kinds of things and create that and create those opportunities to build not only, uh, school district, you know, revenues a little bit, but also build community revenues as well.
Hi, can I make a comment? So, um, I remember all those things from a few years ago as well. We had great, um, cooperation with the city. What I believe killed it a few years ago was, um, the impossible high insurance that we, as a school district, required people to have. Like, we used to have things like gymnastics um, in our high school weight room, all kinds of things. I don't remember who it was, but all of a sudden it all got suffocated by the school district requiring massive amounts of unobtainable insurance to protect ourselves. And I don't, I'm just telling you what I think the hurdles were in the past. So that would be something that we need to look into. And I would love to see us as the center of community events again. It's like you said, we have amazing facilities. I know that just this last summer, I think we had, um, huge tournaments coming over here because they were canceled out in Nevada due to COVID and everybody came over here and the town was just buzzing. And so I would love for us to facilitate that and not just looking at big events, but maybe also smaller events because we have a lot of teachers and a lot of people with a lot of expertise. But, um, like you said, you know, but if they wanna earn some money and they can earn maybe a few hundred dollars, but then if the event insurance costs them a thousand dollars, it's gonna, they're not gonna work for nothing, I guess. So if, I just think that was one of the hurdles that suffocated a lot of problem, programs that we had in the past. So I hope we can get around that.
And that's working with the trust. And, and, you know, I had those same issues because we were a public school district where I was before. But it was just a matter of picking up the phone, calling the trust and say, I need you to issue insurance on this, uh, to this carrier and, and make it happen. It wasn't that difficult to do. And that was one of the problems that we had is, was before, we didn't know the trust would do those kinds of things, our insurance carrier. And we were always looking around, you know, how do you get liability insurance? Well, simply, you call the trust and they'll guide you right through it. They have every vested interest of making sure we have the proper coverage. And you work with them and the cost becomes much less.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because a few years ago, it was just kinda deemed, well, undoable now and everything just died. And that was very unfortunate.
One thing I'd say, and, and I, I think you hear a consensus, uh, let's do the exploratory portion of all this and, and see how, you know, what, what'll come of it. And I would like to, uh, if, if you make communication with the city, I'd like to be involved. Uh, I know Tim really well. I know Greg very well. Uh, we've, we've worked on several programs together, uh, on for our city. So I'd, I'd love to be involved in those kind of things, but I, I think it's got a really good merit.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna add one more thing, I think, regarding, uh, you know, boosting community economy. You know, in the fall and in the wintertime, uh, I, I think that's very helpful, uh, as far as, you know, boosting economy is, you know, uh, an example would be the high school Native American club when they put on those, um, powwows or other, um, cultural events. So, you know, if you have a number of those, which are in the wintertime, you know, those are another a thought to keep back in mind, you know, uh, moving forward, you know, if that's gonna happen next year, next school year or not, I don't know, but it does help, uh, with community.
Yeah, we had powwows when I was here before. I don't know what happened over the years, but, um,
Yeah, but they do, um, you know, generate revenue in town as well. So works both ways for us, with the city, the community and the city and the school.
Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent Wallen, I think you've
So we're talking about events. I would be most interested in what we're going to do about the kids that won state tournament over the weekend. What sort of celebration? I thought maybe parade downtown sometime soon.
I learned today that I understand the mayor is trying to organize such an event. Um, I haven't reached out to him.
No, it's on Facebook. He commented on Facebook that, um, the city will throw them a parade.
Let's do it. Let's definitely book. That, this is exactly what we need. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Candler, I don't, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Okay, we lost you, Bob. We'll have to go to the, who's the, who's the clerk that takes over? Did you push the mute button?
Bob, do you want me to continue?
And maybe, oh, here you go.
We've been having issues with our headphones today. Mine
Well, this, this is just, it, it, uh, it ran out of power. We don't have the Navajo Generation out there, so my headphone went down. All right. So you've got, you, you've got, uh, a consensus, Larry?
Yes.
That you need? Okay, very good. All right, let's go ahead and move on. Uh, next thing on the item on our agenda, uh, K through five, uh, Navajo immersion teaching positions, uh, Superintendent Wallen.
Uh, Mr. President, members of board, I'm requesting the board to give consideration to, um, let me go to my Navajo version, uh, wrong item. Hold on just a second. Sorry. When is the best time to learn language? That's the first question. When's the best time to learn language? And we all know it's when you're young. And if you look at our language program, it starts in sixth grade and goes up to 12th grade and does a decent job. Uh, it does a really good job, actually. We need to start earlier and we need to start earlier for a couple of reasons. One is in our preschool, when kids come to school, uh, they are screened, of cour-, uh, of course, and become, um, half of them are labeled as language delay. And my question when I asked, when I was learning about that was, well, do you screen them in Navajo? And the answer is no, we don't. Well, then this is where you go get the Navajo screening. Because if you can learn one language, you can learn a second or a third. Uh, you know, my grandson speaks Japanese. Uh, that was his language that he decided to follow. So we need to strengthen our Navajo language and we need to look at a Navajo language immersion program. Uh, if we, if our parents say that's what they want, for kids coming into, to preschool and then moving up to strengthen those language skills. The best way to strengthen those language skills is through an immersion program. And so what I'm proposing is that we take our, um, some of our JOM and Title Six, Title Four monies, I believe it is, and fund, uh, two teachers, one preschool through second grade to teach Navajo, Dinae language, and then third through fifth to teach Dinae language. And in the first year of the program, build just the program. The second year begin to look at moving to immersion. Once we've laid the foundations with the parents and everything. And then talking to teachers, yeah, yesterday evening, they said, we used to do this once before and we don't, well, they don't know what happened to it, but, uh, and I, uh, asked Lynn to do some research and she gave you, uh, a informational brief on the language program and Flagstaff. And if Flagstaff can do it, I know we can do it and probably do it better. But that's just some ideas about having what this could look like. But if the board is, again, uh, there's some consensus, I would like to move forward with uh, getting the two teaching positions authorized and put in place to start next year, build the foundation and then in year two, uh, if we have the support of parents move into an immersion program uh, and make that work. But the best time to learn, do language is that. The other thing that goes with this that I had, when I read the, um, Flagstaff proposal that I had missed was we also have a growing Spanish population, Hispanic population. And so we may need to begin to look at some elementary Spanish as well to go in and help with our kids. So, um, I'm just requesting the board's, um, thoughts about putting, going ahead and, and putting in now, uh, Dinae language teachers at uh, preschool through second and third through fifth and building a program and moving forward. I mean, um, it's just, it's just the right thing to do. Starting at sixth grade is way too late. And we need to start earlier to build language strengths. And we would also survey our parents and see what their thoughts are, uh, in relation to that. And I'm sure there's going to be overwhelming support, but we can, in April, as we were talking about today, we started out to our chapter meetings and we can get an informal polling from our chapters on what that, uh, what, what parents would respond to, how they would respond to that. And so that's, that's basically the proposal in a nutshell.
Can I insert something here? Um, you mentioned that you, they, the teachers mentioned that we've had this program before. I remember us having an immersion program at Lakeview for kindergarten and first grade. And, um, you said, nobody knows what happened. I recall, um, Mrs. Kalniptawa being the immersion language teacher. And so, um, I know she's not with the district anymore, but I'm sure somebody could track her down. And she would be the one to tell us why it fell apart and how it fell apart. Because I remember her being that teacher at Lakeview. So she could give you the historical perspective of why that was not continued.
We will reach out to her. Thank you. That's a great idea.
Can you, can I also mention that Mrs. um, Deschitney was also one of the emerging teacher for Lakeview for kindergarten, but she ended up having to move out of the community. So that was carried on by another teacher the following year. And that's when my son was in kindergarten. But there was just a huge turnover with the paras because it was actually the paras that were teaching the last 30 minutes of the class. But I know it was very successful when Mrs. Deschitney was there and also Kalniptawa and there was another teacher, Howard, Melanie, I think her name was Melanie Howard. Yep. And all three of them teachers are no longer in our district.
Yeah. And, uh, the certification requirements have changed for Dinae language. Um, and what that requires is that a, a, a paraprofessional could even do that, that wants to do that. They go to uh, the Navajo Nation, Dinae Division of Education. They are screened, they're given a test to determine their fluency and their cultural knowledge, the tribe or the Navajo Nation recommends them. They can go to ADE and get a full teaching certificate, just like a teaching, just like I have. And become, and be certified as full teachers. It's not that they have to go to like somewhere and take 24 hours of Navajo language. Uh, it's that it's based on the cultural experience and their degree of proficiency as determined by the Navajo Nation. And that is out there and something we really would, would encourage, uh, people to do, to get that certification, even if it's a teacher with an elementary degree, I would still encourage them to get the Navajo language certification.
So, Lynn, oh, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you remember the year that we had, um, an interest from two, one of the Tubus City emerging teacher interested in the position? I don't know if it was a couple of years back or if it was just last year, because this has been in the conversation for a while when Barner was still here.
Um, I do remember, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I do remember having those conversations and I think Carrie was also, uh, part of, um, that as well and would have some recollection. Uh, there was an individual, but I think there was, there were some complications. And I'm not really sure what those complications were, but I, I do remember, yeah.
I'm sorry. If the board thinks that's a good direction to go, then I will, uh, prepare the job descriptions and, uh, the authorization for the positions at the next meeting and we'll incorporate then that into our federal funds to start.
Mr. Wallen, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yes, go for it, Mr. Wallen.
Okay.
I, I, I can say that, um, you know, from my own experience, and this would be kind of an opposite, but, uh, you know, I went to boarding school in kindergarten and first grade. And I did not, I was not able to, you know, communicate or speak fluently in Navajo. And so, you know, it was a challenge uh, to communicate with other kids, but at the same time, it was uncomfortable. So, you know, the positive aspect on this side is that, um, if students have that cultural barrier where they can't communicate and you have this, um, class where you're teaching language and culture, it helps them become more comfortable in the learning environment.
Absolutely.
So I think it's a positive.
Thank you.
Very great. Anybody else? Sounds really good.
I think I only have one more question. So with this class, is it going to be like a special where students get to attend a portion of this class for the day? Or is it a full class of kindergarten, a full class of first, second? I'm just curious to know. Sorry.
Well, and that's not developed yet. The idea first is to have the first year where we would have Navajo, Dinae language as an elective. And then begin to build a foundation the next year. If we're going to have a full immersion program, that's going to be quite an expansion from just, you know, a, a, a one-hour class. And so, uh, and begin to set that up. I'm, I have not, I've never started an immersion program. I understand the concepts, but I would want to involve teachers and, uh, some other experts into creating that diversion, that immersion class. Uh, but what I understand is it's 60/40. Um, at like in Flagstaff, it's 60% uh, uh, Navajo and then 40% English. Or it can be the other way around, 40/60, or it can be 50/50. Kind of a thing. And Lynn, did I give you a, uh, how much was each when you did your research for me? In terms of the percentage?
I don't recall seeing that anywhere as far as how it was, um, divided out.
Yeah, let me share my screen.
Uh, yeah, the reason why I asked that is because I think that was one of the barriers for this individual who had interest is that this teacher was to do a full emerging class of one grade or something, and it wasn't an elective, and that's where that barrier happened. Just curious, just
Oh, it's a good question. If we move into the immersion program, uh, just looking at Flagstaff's uh, kindergarten, first grade, uh, it's 80% uh, Dinae and then 70%. Um, 80, 70, what is it? In time is about 80 to 70% Dinae and then 30 to 40% English, depending on how it's, how it's put together. Um, there's, and there's another model of Winderock I would look at, and also a model in San Carlos, um, Unified School District that I would look at as well in relation to what's the best practices to create an immersion program.
Sounds good. And I look forward to hearing in the future, near future about the, um, Spanish classes for the younger grades as well. Thank you.
Well, because we have an emerging Hispanic population.
Hey, thank you, board members and, uh, Superintendent Wallen, we're, we're good with it.
Okay, we'll move forward. We're planning it then.
Thank you. Item F, uh, budget revision discussion, Ms. Wurhandi.
Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Wallen. And as I share my screen with you, we are going to, um, look at what, um, our general budget limit looks like over the, uh, course of this year. And while it's significantly reduced, um, due to the reduction in the average daily membership and the distance learning, uh, decrease. Um, so you'll see at the beginning of the year, when we adopted the budget, our general budget limit for maintenance and operations fund, uh, we were, uh, we at 17.7 million approximately with the ADM, um, of about 2,412. And, um, then when we revised the budget in December, we were at, um, uh, reduced our, our ADM, uh, to about 2199 and that, uh, brought our budget limit down to about 17.6 million. And, uh, we are anticipating to submit our budget, second budget revision to you, um, next month. Um, so then we projected our, um, budget limit to be 16.7 million. Um, this is with the ADM of six, 2,168. This is mainly due, this reduction is mainly due to the loss and the distance learning decrease. Um, uh, this is why our budget limit, uh, is reducing. Um, then we have projections for, uh, our budget revision three. We may even be at a 15.3 million dollar budget reduction because we are anticipating to receive a further, uh, decrease in our, um, distance learning percentage. Um, and we've also calculated our, um, fiscal year '22 budget, uh, limit, um, approximately it'll be about 17.6 million, but it's based on a projected carry forward of about 2.3 million dollars. So as you see, we, we receive funds through other grants, federal grants and all that. And also we, on our maintenance operation fund, we are seeing uh, major reductions due to, uh, our reduction in average daily membership. So in the end, I want to say we really need to look at strategically, look at where, um, what areas, look at all the areas of our budget and look to see where we are. We can reduce, uh, to reach our goal over the next few years. And, um, and that then that would help us make some decisions to, um, towards sustainability of our district. That brings us to the conclusion, if you have any
Go back, go back a slide, please.
Sure.
Right there. Okay, this is a quiz for board members. Everybody's on this. What's the difference between FY '21 and FY '22? ADM is the same. What made it different?
By 300, by 300,000.
Uh, I'm actually by 2.3, almost 2.3 million.
Oh, 2.3, I'm looking at this. I took the 15s and my eyes are, put my glasses on.
Yeah.
Yeah, 2.3.
But the ADM is the same at 2168. Now, granted, that's, that's why I said when we were talking with, with, uh, Ms. Wood earlier, we're living in three years right now with the COVID and everything.
Right.
But what makes that different? Why is that? What, what makes that different? So what Vendi is telling you um, is good advice. But what she's telling you that in FY '21, we're going to under expend that budget by another 2.3 million.
2.3.
But we can take it over to FY '22. That is, um, a challenge. That'll be a big challenge because we still have not brought our current budget up to, uh, meet the ADM yet. So that's why it's almost a three-year proj- project to do this budget balance and make it go forward. Um, and, and of course that's dependent on enrollment staying the same and ADM staying the same. So Jay, I just wanted you to see that and see, wait a minute, ADM is the same, but the numbers are different. Why are they different? Well, because we're, we're expecting to under expend that FY '21 budget by reducing this year by, what is it, Vendi, 1.2 million? Uh, basically, and then going next year and under expending by another 2.
Another million, yeah, yeah.
See what's happening across time. And that's what business, good business managers like Vendi, keep in their mind as they're moving forward with that, is that those are projections. So minimally, the FY '22 budget could be 15,392,896. If we do the, the, the projected carry forward reduce, then, you know, we'll see where we are. And it's very possible because we have all the COVID money that we're now programming. But again, the COVID money is a one-time expense. Always
Bubble, bubble. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for pointing that out. Appreciate that.
That's all A's on passing the test.
No, no. Hey, I thought we were the time of being honest with one another. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And Vendi, thank you.
I have some questions.
Yeah, go.
Can you put that screen back up?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Um. So the first number. Just want to make sure I understand this correctly. On your second slide, you said the, where's the seventeen, seven thirty three, nine seventy six?
Second page.
Okay, that was for our current school year, correct? That's what we just, we thought we would have.
Exactly, at the start of the year, yes.
That was the start of the year. That was our first one. Then you put the first budget revision, you revisioned it down by about seventy five thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
Why? Now, board, here's a question. Test, guys, why did that happen? Do you remember the adopted budget? Then did you remember what happened in the budget revision?
Hmm. We didn't really.
Not yet, wait, let him think. I'm holding him accountable for this budget stuff. Not yet.
So I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to remember what happened.
Okay, well.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, and that's a good question, and I'll let Vendi, Vendi tell you now. For the FY twenty one G B L, what happened that caused that to only be reduced by that much?
Um, because at the, so all of the changers um came into play mid-December is what happened. We revised the budget by i- in November, so.
Because you had a.
A D M reduction of.
No, you had a carry forward. Remember, your estimated carry forward in the initial budget was a million. Your actual carry forward was how much? Two point three?
Two million.
And that's why it changed that line number. It wasn't that the kids changed, yeah, they reduced, but you compensated for that by having that.
To carry over, okay, yeah, yeah, I remember that.
And now we're looking ahead and doing the same thing, and that's important to understand. Carry forward is very helpful. Um, but it's not something that you can, it's not something that you can, rest assured will happen.
Gotcha.
Sandra, on that one, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that was the first, okay, I'm hearing an echo. That was the first budget revision. And then on the second budget revision, that's like almost nine hundred thousand dollars.
You had two things take place. Vendi, what are they? Number one?
Uh, the distant, uh, sorry, the A D M loss, uh, that cost us about a million dollars. Reduction in A D M, and then the distant learning decrease cost us about uh six hundred thirty five thousand.
Okay, okay, slow down. So tell me, um, what was, how much was the remote learners? How many remote learners did we lose? Or is that because of um?
Virtual learning.
Yeah.
Um, for virtual learning is based on ninety five percent of the state.
Right, okay, so that five percent, okay.
That's the five percent. Now, it's possible, we may get some of it back in the spring. If the attendance audit shows that, it's not likely, but it's possible. We may recover some of it in this, in the spring when we do a final A D M um upload and stuff. But right now, that's what it is.
And then your projection for next year is one point four million in cuts, correct?
One point two, is it, Vendi, that what you gave me?
Yes, one point.
Maybe I miscalculated.
But we're also planning on a carry forward too, that we got to be very careful about.
Okay. So. One solution to all of this is try to get our students back. Where did they go? And how we're going to entice them to come back?
Absolutely.
What, 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 what kind of plans do we have regarding trying to get our students back? Other than just telling them, come back?
Uh, telling them to come back, yeah, no, uh, you know, it's improving the quality of instruction. Um, it's, it's working together to um, to focus on what's happening. We're, you know, we're taking, starting registration drives, we're going to run a fantastic summer school that's going to pull kids in. And move forward with that. I think, uh, quite frankly, our, our recent win in sports is going to make a difference to some families and bring their kids back and so on.
Mr. Wellen?
Yes.
I have a question to add to um that regarding the COVID and um. You know, I know there's a push for kids to come back to school, but I've heard from, uh, you know, some teachers. Uh, there's still a concern, I think, I don't know if, if the concern is with the teacher or with the student, you know? For example, if you have students coming in and, you know, they're being uh still checked, right, temperature wise.
Everything, yeah.
So they go in the classroom and then all of a sudden, you know, you get kids coughing and teachers get concerned when kids start coughing, you know, I. I cough all the time, every day almost, you know? Uh, sneeze, right? Everybody does. And so I think from what I've heard, teachers get a little scared. Now, I don't know if all the teachers have been vaccinated or not. So again, you know, what's the concern or the safety is a concern or safety for the teachers or for the students? You know, students are getting sent home because they're coughing, but are they truly, you know, sick or are they just coughing? You know, it's allergy season too, but.
Allergy season.
You know, it's, it's kind of tough.
They're immediately contacted by uh the referrals, media goes up to Peter and the crisis team. And um they meet with the kid, they do the, the screening, and if the kid has, shows COVID-like symptoms, those are the key words. They show, with like symptoms, which could be allergies, they're asked to go home and get tested, so they can run over to LaChee or they can run over to First Baptist Church here and get a test. If you test negative, then you can come right back to school. If you test positive, then we know where, where that leads. So that is in place and that happens every day. There's probably two or three kids that get, gets um checked every day. Because they, they're, just like you said, they are screened and we pick it up real quick. Um, then it's determining is it, is it the allergy or is it the, you know?
Yeah, I don't know.
The test now is going down to age sixteen, that's going to start, I believe, Wednesday. We were told today that uh vaccinations will start at age sixteen, starting Wednesday, that would be a possibility. So that would be a part of, of the thing that helps.
I don't know, I mean, I kind of argued in, at work a couple of times where I've coughed and people had concerns, but I said, you know what, I'm totally fine. But I don't know.
Yeah, but this, this is the world of verification now.
Yeah, I know.
So we have our protocol to verify and it's, it seems to work, no one seems to be, we don't get any resistance to that, they're, they're.
Yeah.
With it. Um, my last understanding was eighty five percent of our staff have vaccinated. I just got my first shot Saturday.
Yeah, so I mean, like again, what's the concern? Is it the concern for, is the teachers are concerned for their safety or is it the students?
Both, absolutely both.
Mm-hmm. If, if, if all the teachers are vaccinated, I mean. I know we're been told to trust the vaccination and, you know, that it's going to work and it's, you know, ninety five percent effective. I'm just, you know, you know where I'm getting at, right? Just trying to understand it.
Well, what I appreciate with what we're doing is the fact that we've put in place the best, in, in, in my mind, the best uh. Practices. And then we were fortunate to get Peter in as well, and every piece of data that we have at this point with anyone who has, has COVID. That we haven't demonstrated any, any spread uh at or through the school. And so uh at this point, everything's been working in the midst of the worst of the whole thing at this point. So now, moving forward, we still have those protocols in place. And we don't know exactly how long that will be. That's going to be determined hopefully by some of our resources through the C W C and various other things. Of course, national comments and varies like, like that, but I think I really applaud, everything's been going on at this point. To keep our teachers, our staff well and uh with the, with the concern of the kids as well, but I think that that's been, that's been working. So I think that that's awesome. But don't you sneeze in this boardroom, we're going to get a, we're going to get a, a swab up your nose and touch your medulla bongata. So. Yeah. I, anyway, but hey, I, I don't, I made fun at the end of it, but I think we're doing things pretty well here.
I, I just think we'll lose a quorum by then.
I think we're done. Point of order. All right, uh, any other comments uh with regard to the budget revision? Ms. Burhen, Wurhandi, thank you so much, appreciate that. And now, we've been into this quite a bit and I'm going to offer a, a couple minute break if you need it to get up. Uh, if that's okay with you, yours, or do we want to plow through? We want a break? All right, let's take, let's take about a three minute break, let's be real conscious, go do, get up, stretch a little bit, and we'll be right back with it.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yep, are we all back? We got everybody. And uh. Our guest, I know, Dr. Mauer, you here? Oh, there you go.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are we ready to pick back up? Let's go ahead and do that, uh, and we will uh. Go to.
Okay, never mind. I see Larry.
Okay. Item G, budget reduction discussion, uh, Dr. Mauer and Superintendent Wallen.
Well, that's what I would ask you to do again, is pull out that sheet of paper.
Yeah.
Put a big circle for immediate needs and put a big circle for ongoing needs, because we need to look at what we immediately need to do. To finish out this year and balance this budget and then ongoing needs for what we want to consider next year. And so Dr. Mauer is going to outline our best estimates of the immediate and ongoing budget needs for next year. And what that's going to look like. And as you've heard throughout the course of this meeting, we have shifting priorities and challenges brought about by the COVID. It's had significant implications on student learning and, and we're going to be dealing with that for a long time. Student learning that, you know, is our pathway to a B district. And from March to May twenty twenty one, we had paper packets, from June to July, no summer school, from August to February sixteenth, virtual learning, in-person learning. You know, we shifted and pivoted back and forth, hybrid learning uh to found, to face the countless challenges. That uh to connectivity and our transition to uh return to school after February sixteenth, we're back in school. Uh, we still don't have all of our kids back yet, but that's what we have to look at. With our loss of student enrollment. We have to adjust our budget and, and to meet our student count. And so, again, there's an artificial bubble here from all the COVID monies that we're going to be receiving. Those monies need to be considered as temporary and just like that in a bubble. Due to the governor's executive order and then, you know, the five percent reduction, the uh six hundred thirty five thousand dollar loss in this year's budget. As a result of the way that the, the virtual learning is calculated and that way we have to count for it. So this is a year of shifting priorities, pivoting, COVID nineteen and lifestyle changes, the challenge, each step we take. To that pathway to the B district, we run into something. You know, we're cruising along, all of a sudden, we got hit with. You know, we're cruising along, and all of a sudden, we got hit with the 5% reduction in virtual learning. We cruise along, we get hit with this. We cruise along, we get hit with that. So, we need to look at where we are, what's immediate, what's ongoing, and how we're going to do that. And the most important piece, and you've heard that theme throughout this, is our teachers. Um, that's what it's about. That's who makes the difference in student learning, is our teachers. And so, my first priority in, in moving toward the budget, presenting you with a budget that will keep us on the path of becoming a B district, is to maintain my teachers and keep as many teachers as I can based on student enrollment. My goal is to sustain, sustain our community's safe operations of the schools and address the pandemic needs, but that still requires good teachers in the classroom. I've been so impressed with the increases in learning that I've seen. Um, we still have a long ways to go, but we've made some major significant changes. In a virtual environment, guys, don't forget, it's a virtual environment. And a lot of control's been given back to parents. And some places they recognize that, and some places they don't, just as Chuck has brought up. And now, all of a sudden, we're gonna try to get back into the real school and see what that looks like. And we don't know where that's gonna go. We know we're back in session now. Uh, we're hoping to have summer school back in session next fall. We'll see where we are in relation to that. But we need to build a strong educational environment that, uh, that works for our kids, and we need to support our teachers and our principals, and our support staff to meet those needs and make everybody safe. But we also have to balance that against the positions and focus on positions. And I would encourage you as the board to focus on positions and not on people. It's about positions, and how does that position meet the vision and mission of the district? Uh, when you bring in people into it, you're gonna gridlock the process. So, as you listen to the outline, focus on the guiding principles we use to build a needs-based budget for page. You know, this is something that is not something that was created this year just because of the COVID. This has been an ongoing concern in relation to budgeting inefficiencies and that kind of thing. And so, we are going to give you some overviews again, and begin to put together some details that will make a difference. So, I ask you to, uh, look at Dr. Mauer's presentation to, as you're going through, make notes about immediate needs, about ongoing needs, and let's see where we're going. So, with that, um, Mr. President, Dr. Mauer.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Wallen, Governing Board President, uh, Governing Board members, colleagues, and guests. I wanna share my screen here with you. And if I could get a, uh, thumbs up that everyone can see that. Okay, excellent. So, can we see it?
Nope.
Alright. How about that? Perfect, okay. So, the first thing I wanna do is, I really wanna talk through, and, and, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Wallen talking through some of this as well, and then the idea that we've heard this from our principals, that the, the pathway to this B district is through quality teachers. Uh, and with that, we're gonna take a quick review of the district's-
Hey, Carrie, can you hold on one second?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay, because it worked now?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Kidman, can you hear me?
I think we're set.
Okay.
Be good. Okay, good.
So, uh, you received a rather large packet of a lot of background work. And what I would ask is, that packet that you have, really just the first page, the top of the first page, is what you're looking at, and that's part of this presentation. Uh, and then, the idea of reconciliation. So, this is bringing, kind of bringing it all back together. Uh, and how do we build a budget that, that is immune to budget cuts? So, when we take a look at this, uh, we're gonna start with the first piece, which is our, our district's, uh, PUSD's vision. I'll give you a second to read it. And then, in this, I'm not gonna ask you to, to talk out loud or tell me what words kind of stand out to you. Um, but as you're reading this, uh, focus in on a few words, and I'll share the ones that I see. You know, "We're a community of learners directing our collective actions and resources." Uh, so, that, that really stands out to me personally. You have ones that stand out to you. Uh, so, take a second and read this, and then we'll move on to the next slide. Okay? And then, this is our mission. This is the PUSD mission. Same kind of idea. Reading through this, what, what couple of words, what quick sentence stands out. Um, and in this context, to, to, to me, when I read it, "Every student matters." So, we look at this, uh, "We're passionate, and every student matters." So, that's the district's vision and the district's mission. And then, when we get to the Governing Board policy, in this instance, we're looking at the guiding principles of Governing Board Policy DA. Uh, and in that context, uh, we're looking through short and long-term planning, through budgeting procedures, uh, exploring all legal sources of monetary income. So, you heard Mr. Wallen talk about the possibility of us bringing the district back around, uh, to being a focal point of our community. That could be an income generator. And then, when we look at number three in particular, the greatest educational returns. So, the returns on our investment. So, we guide the expenditures of the funds to achieve the greatest educational returns. That's an ROI model. So, the money we're putting out through the entire district, what are the educational returns we're getting back from it, and how are we measuring that? So, what does the measurement look like? And then, what are the reporting procedures for those measurements of everything we do in PUSD? So, these are the ones that are in policy. Now, these are some additional guiding principles that, in listening to the Governing Board talk over the past couple of years, uh, in, in sitting with Mr. Wallen and listening to him speak, and working with many of our employee groups, really hearing what's being said and, and putting these down into words. You know, we say, "Okay, well, we're gonna have to look at reducing expenditures." Well, I've heard this over and over, you know, "We're looking at attrition through resignations." That's how we're looking at reducing staffing, uh, where necessary. Uh, we wanna maintain equity in all of our employee benefits. Um, one of the things, and I've recruited now for almost four years, uh, and every time I go out to recruit, uh, no matter what the position, all of our positions have a, a robust employee benefit package. And specifically, I'm thinking about the medical benefits in our district. No matter what position you have in our district, the district picks up the initial cost for the employee benefit. That is really, uh, a, a big piece for PUSD. We, we compete at the highest levels, uh, when it comes to that. Most districts, there's a, employee has to contribute, or it's, it's not such a robust package. So, we do have that, but it's equitable. It's, 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 it's against all employees. We don't, everybody gets close to the same, right? And then, we have Impact Aid in our district, and we've seen, uh, our, our district over the years. Uh, the Schools Facilities Board has not come along and, and kept up our, our air conditioning, kept up our buildings. Uh, we see the pool in, in what it looks like, the CAB. So, how can we help protect Impact Aid? And use Impact Aid to improve our buildings, improve our spaces, so that, in turn, is where our students are. It's a, it's a, a, a very safe and inviting environment for things that aren't covered by SFB. Let's take a look at the next slide here. When we think about instruction, and this is a policy, uh, the student-teacher ratio, and I, and I appreciate, the questions around, uh, what are our teacher ratios in our classes? Uh, you heard from a couple of, of the, uh, principals. So, this is a responsibility of the Governing Board. The recommendation each year should be made by the superintendent uh, around the idea of what is needed in staffing patterns specifically around instruction. Uh, and that's part of this process of review. So, let's take a look, uh, at the next part here, which is our staffing ratios. Uh, currently this year, uh, we strived, and this is a, this is the minimum. You saw on the Auditor General's report that, uh, we have about one teacher or one teacher for every 20 students. So, that does not mean that some classes aren't above that or below that. Uh, but this is where we strive to keep the staffing in line. You heard, you heard Mr. Wallen talk a little bit about the idea of, uh, keeping our class sizes. Uh, the most effective person for instruction is the teacher. So, keeping the class sizes low, uh, we would look to keep that about the same. You can see, um, there's not any change from the previous years to this year, uh, coming forward. Uh, and that would be part of a, a larger discussion, but this is the minimum. This does not mean that we won't be adding additional staff for doing other parts, other valuable programs, uh, like music or PE. Uh, those are valuable programs in our district, and we would continue to grow those programs as well.
Can I interrupt you, please?
Yes.
So, I am very confused on the student-staffing ratio. Is what you describe here as 2020-21 or current, um, ratios, is that actually, is that what you were planning for, for this year? Or is that actually the reality right now? Because I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wallen, seeing very different student-to-teacher ratios than what is described here in your office.
So, that's the current, the 20 to 21 current is what we anticipated staffing at for this year and targeted.
But, but that's not how it is right now, correct?
Um, I would have to-
We, I mean, with our ADM that we lost, what are our actual student-to-teacher ratios? They gotta be way lower, correct?
Uh, that could, it, so, it could possibly be lower in certain parts and a little higher in others. But on the next slide, you'll see, um, in some cases, we had teachers who wanted to retire early, right, and through attrition, uh, maybe in this instance, a third-grade teacher wanted to retire early or wanted to just retire and not come back to school this year. And so, we took that resignation and then didn't refill that position. So-
Okay, but you didn't answer my question. Are those actual numbers, or were those the planning numbers for this year?
Those were the planning numbers for this year.
Okay.
But I will, I will get the actual numbers for each of the grade levels, uh, for you i- in my next report.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and, and so, from here, when we look at our next, uh, slide, so as we're looking at all of the positions and all of the possibilities in our district, one of the things that, that came out, uh, through our conversations was, yeah, in our district, district-wide, we have approximately 61 paraprofessionals. Now, the paraprofessionals do a wide range of jobs for us. But in this instance, we're looking at the salary, just the salary of the 61 paraprofessionals is approximately $1.5 million. And this is a wealth of information and a wealth of, of, of talent in our district. And as you heard our, uh, elementary principals talk about, uh, some, some reading intervention programs or some reading training, or training around the idea of becoming, uh, better teachers. In this instance, we would look at reviewing and analyzing the paraprofessional job descriptions, strengthening the offerings that our paras have for the learning experiences of our students. And then, uh, I had an opportunity to work with Mrs. Case last year. Again, this year, uh, we have pathways for individuals who may not have any college experience to be able to move towards a college diploma for free. Uh, it starts out with an AA degree, uh, but they could move through that entire process, uh, to become a teacher. So, this would be a pathway for our paraprofessionals to gain knowledge and job skills inside of what they're already doing, strengthening our offerings for our students, and in turn, becoming teachers for us, uh, in the future. One, one opportunity that we have that I wanted to highlight. One of the other Governing Board policies that we were, we're looking at specifically, uh, is to the staff fringe benefits. So, when we look at professional staff and support staff fringe benefits packages, uh, you heard me talk a little bit about the medical insurance. The cost to the district for the medical insurance is about $1.75 million. Uh, when we look at our holiday, our paid holidays, uh, that we offer staff, uh, as a total package, uh, we're looking at about, uh, $400,000. Uh, vacation days, that would be something that is around, uh, the 12-month employees. Uh, that's about $325,000. Uh, sick or undesignated or paid time off, we're running those calculations as we speak. What does that fringe benefit package cost? And then, bereavements down there, and there's some other ones as well. But when we think about the salary, and when we're recruiting, we're thinking about the salary. But there's a whole, large other piece that is called the fringe benefit package or delayed compensation that goes around, uh, what we offer our employees here in PUSD. Uh, our current status, and this is just a quick checkup. Uh, right now, through attrition, and you heard Vindi speak a little bit about this, we've saved as a district, uh, approximately $1.1 million or about 43 positions. Uh, this continually will change as, uh, if we have some resignations. There are some positions that we continue to fill, uh, or we're looking at recruiting internally to fill those positions. We're working with our site leaders, uh, we're working with, uh, the district level on, on school-wide staffing patterns and district-wide staffing patterns. Uh, we're looking at an evaluation around, uh, the contract lengths. So, nine, 10, 11, 12-month contracts, and what do each of those contract lengths mean? Uh, what jobs are being performed, and, and is that the best use of the contract time? Uh, we're running a, a medical insurance, our, our current medical insurance analysis. We've met with, uh, our medical benefits. Uh, we've gone through some cost analysis, so we'll be bringing that forward as well. Uh, we're looking at the extra duty and stipends that we have out there. Uh, in 2019-20, the total cost to the district was $340,000, uh, for stipends and extra duty. Uh, and then, the last piece on this is the program effectiveness, and this goes back to the original piece in the policy. When we look at each of the programs, each of the things in our district, what is the return? How are they being evaluated? And are they, are they at the pinnacle of what they should be doing for us according to that evaluation? And how can we strengthen those programs? Uh, especially when we look around, uh, and I'll, I'll talk about preschool a little bit. Um, we look at our preschool program. We know the idea that getting students intervention as early as possible is the best for success in the long term. So, how do we strengthen that program? How do we build it up? And how do we provide access to as many children as we possibly can? You heard our principals talk about the Gear Up program and what they're looking at. You've had a report on Avid. Um, you heard Mr. Wallen talk a little bit about the CAB. Uh, so, really looking at everything we do in the district, how is it? What's the educational return on it for us, and how effective is it? Our next steps, and this is on that front page that I was talking about, uh, this is an ongoing process. So, we will be building out specific dates for this, so that when this starts again next year, we've got all of this in place, and we're not bringing this to you, uh, in March or in April. This is something that starts back a full couple of months. So then, as we get to this point, we're, we're talking really about our successes, what our next steps are as building the programs up for the future. Uh, or in some instances, we're not getting the return on the investment anymore for a program, and it- and it may be looking at sunsetting that program. And what would that look like? Knowing that we really want to evaluate our program's success around criteria, things that we can measure, not the anecdotal evidence, but actual measurements. So with that, are there any questions or thoughts?
I guess I was just curious, um, the vision and the mission, that's been the same for a while. And I was just curious, who's, whose vision and whose mission is it? The school, the superintendent?
My assumption will be it was the boards.
The boards, okay.
I'm not sure.
I was just, I was just curious because, you know, I think it's all about a positive impact and how you can positively impact, you know, the school, the vision and the mission. So I, I know that Superintendent Wallen's vision and mission is, you know, the B pathway. So the, I'm just curious if that, if you see that vision statement or mission statement there, or if that correlates to your, you know, the B pathway.
Uh, for me it does because it's about the, the, the unique learning needs of every child and moving in that direction. When you go to the strategic plan that has now been expired a couple of years. But when you go to the strategic, strategic plan under the plan, it says become a B district. So it's not something that, it's been on there for a while. And it's something that, that I've now turned in and turned into this mantra. And that we need to be passionate about it and passionate about the learning for all students. Every student matters is, is in the, you know, the curriculum, the, the Bible and the Bible providing every kid.
I know that basically this is for the staff, teachers and faculty, right? To, to know and understand what the vision and the mission is. So, but I mean, if they question, what is the mission? You know, where it says, learning for all, mission and understand. It doesn't say what the mission or does it? And this, do you want the mission to, do you want to state or end, you know, what it is? The mission is in this paragraph, I guess, where I'm getting at. You know what I was, you know, you know where I'm getting at?
Right.
I mean, if it, me being new, I was like, what's the mission? You know, if the teacher sees this and what is the mission? I don't know what the mission is. I'm just curious, you know?
Yeah, the, the mission is about that learning for all. That's the critical piece. So every kid is advancing on the learning continuum. That's what we're about. And to get to that B district, we know that we have to show this much growth and this much uh, on our assessments now. That, that's the big piece, the learning for all. So when you're looking at second graders moving to third grade, they should be able to read. You know, what does that target looks like? We should see 70, 75% of our second graders moving to third grade who are scoring on their tests. The same thing with fifth grade to sixth grade. We should be looking at 75 to 80%. And at some point we will get there. Right now, we're not there yet. But, and it takes up to three years to bring about that kind of a change.
That would be the intent, basically. I mean, if you had an intent section, you say, this is what we're going to do to meet or to achieve the mission.
Well, the fun part about vision and mission is the fact that it gives you that that overall motif, I guess, for who you, for who you want to be, who you are. And it has really nice phrasing and words and, but when it gets down to it, it becomes an issue of then the goals that are set at each level to meet this vision and mission. And that is to be. And so that's, uh, you know, you hear that all the time. We've heard it in our Avid, we've heard it in our, in the presentations today. We've heard it all the time from Larry and, and then most of the staff. Cause everyone knows, you know, what, what the, how, how this is reflected in the end product. And the end product is the student achievement. But at any point in time, any board member wants to look at this and have discussion concerning this. We can certainly have that. But like I said, we, we took a lot of time doing that when we, when we went to a strategic plan five years ago. And so now it's just a matter of fact, making this part of the DNA. That's, that's when it gets right down to it. When you wrap your head around vision, mission, then how do you meet that? And so that's, that's what each, in my mind, each one of the grade levels is challenged with. How, how do I meet this with my students? So.
That's, yeah, Mr. Candelaria and Mr. Weiss, that's, that's exactly on, on it. So when you hear, when you hear Mr. Wallen talk about and, and the idea of a B district and we're accountable for all of our students every day that walk through our doors. You then, you then think about the principal level and, and the building goals that the building has and what the principal's watching. And then from there, you're down into the classroom. And so how does the classroom teacher articulate this out? And that, that is something where we talk, or you would hear talk about all the students reading at or above grade level. And that's where the CFA comes in, which regulates up to the benchmark. So that's a whole, that's how it gets all the way down into the weeds. And then once the students are building their own goals and once the students are saying, you know, I'm, I'm going to get to this level or this in AR, they want to get to the next color. But they're then becoming accountable for their own learning and taking ownership of that. So that's part of that, part of that process that's being built.
Okay.
But when I'm putting this together and listening to Dr. Myers' presentation, look at in terms of immediate needs and ongoing needs, one of the critical pieces that I hear is attrition. And I see on the, where he puts the current status, that the staffing reduction through attrition this year has been approximately one point more, 1.1 million or 43 positions. And I would say that needs to become an immediate need. That's, that's how we're going to reduce, we're going to reduce.
Repeat that number one more time, please. What did you say?
1.1 millions on the current status.
So staff, staff, okay.
Forty-three positions.
Okay, wait, are you talking about? We need to cut 30, 43 positions? Or did you tell me how many we lost this last year?
That's how many we've lost to attrition.
Already?
Already.
Okay, so 2020, 21, 43 positions through attrition.
Correct.
Okay, so what's your projection for next year? How many positions do we need to lose?
Uh, I would say that, my hope is that's enough. As we're looking at programming and everything, because I'm looking more at the dollar amount. We need to come up with about 1.2 million. So right now I'm about a hundred thousand dollars off that target.
A hundred thousand right now?
About a hundred thousand, yeah. And so I'm saying, okay, attrition seems like a strategy that's working. And sometimes we don't, we, we still have to fill that position because it's a critical needs position. Sometimes we do, but we evaluate every position in relation to what it's going to provide for the, the school and the staffing patterns and all these pieces. That's one thing I think is an immediate need in terms of building the budget for next year. The second one, attrition runs that. And another piece that I think needs to be looked at is length of contracts. That's something that we can take a position on now and move into next year. So for example, we have a 12 month, 11 month, 10 month, nine month contracts. 11 month and 10 month. 10, 11, 12 months involve paid vacation days. So what about if in a, rather than cutting someone's salary now, we begin to look at those positions attrition out? We were going to, the new hire is going to come in. Instead of being a 12 month position, it's going to be an 11 month position or it's going to be a 10 month position. So we began at a, a plan to do that and that'll reduce the cost uh, on those positions. Do we need 12 month positions? In some cases, yes, in many cases, no. But we have a lot of people on 12 month contracts. That two strategies right there is going to net us enough to meet the budget needs for, for next year, I think. We would also evaluate extra duty stipends. And we're preparing that already where we'll have a, a list of these are the extra duty stipends that are available at the school site. And this is what you choose from. Instead of saying what's been done in the past is what do you need? And here it is. No, this is where we are and we, we need to look at that. So my big focus in immediate needs, if it were me, would be to focus on staffing patterns and vacation days by reducing contracts as we go forward for positions that we can look at. And then the extra duty stipends, where can we do or not do? What's the value of returning those stipends? In the ongoing needs, the long term, I would say, um, one of the things we need to look at is grow our own teachers, performing pathway to teacher certification. That we're saying to our paraprofessionals, which is about 1.5 million, that we want to give you five years to get your degree. And we'll, we'll set up some incentives to help you do that. But this is the way we want to move forward. If we're going to have that 1.5 million in paraprofessionals and we may have to do that because we may not be able to find enough teachers. We use that one, those, those paraprofessionals to, to cover critical needs, but in the same process, we want to move you toward teacher certification. So I know that there is a program, just as an example, in preschool, I believe it is, where you get an AA. What was that Terry?
Yes, yes, sir. So the. So that is in preschool, if you're part of that, and Penny had brought this in. I want to say a year or two ago, and we had some, some individuals take advantage of it. It's with a partnership with Coconino Community College. And they would receive the ability to get an AA degree over the course of them working for us. And, and continue then from there, I, we can work through with our teacher academies that are at NAU, ASU, U of A. They'll actually provide bachelors in teaching. And then in, in, in all cases, if our teachers already have bachelors, we can get them master's degrees. So all, and all of that's free of cost. It just requires a couple of forms that we are helping teachers fill out or, or paraprofessionals. But in that context, that training is based around helping strengthen the learning experiences for our students.
And the now, the shift now is on virtual learning, especially at the college level. You're seeing more and more opportunities for virtual learning. Let's bring that virtual learning here. We have Coconino across the street that could get to the AA level. Then we can, we could partner with Grand Canyon as an example, or NAU or AAU, ASU, U of A to build that strong pathway to be teacher certification. And that would be one of our grow, grow our own strategies so that we have the, 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 the people that we need to do the job. But I believe that based on the changes that we've made so far and the, the conservation that we've used with keeping attrition as in the forefront, looking at contract linked for new hires. Those two strategies right there will carry us over into next year and give us a balanced budget. That's my projection right now. But remember, there's all kinds of shifting, shifting priorities and challenges out there. But right now, based on what I know, um, those are some possibilities that I would look. And then begin to look at ongoing, looking at one of the pieces is paid holidays. You know, you're giving, what was it, 14 paid holidays to, and as part of that benefit package is that, can you continue to afford 14 paid holidays? And third, I'm sorry, 13 paid holidays and what that would look like. And so that would become an ongoing strategy that we will begin to look at next year as a possibility for reduction. And then back everything up with our, our COVID monies for one year to help us smooth out the bubble a little bit. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
Uh, one question, when, when you say, uh, you know, the, the term of the contract, 11, 12 months. And you, I, I hear you say that when we, if we do consider that, then it would be initiated with the new hires?
Yes, use that same attrition model.
Okay.
And that we would focus on setting the new standards for new hires. And I realize that creates a double standard in some cases, but we have to grow through that. Otherwise it's going to be really hurtful to go in and start reducing positions.
Well, and, and I think through all of this, you know, Ms. Kidman has constantly kept us focused on the fact that our budgets are not going to be the same. And I, we're very aware of the fact that the bubble situation and all those kinds of things and the fact that, that we are losing students. Should we, you know, shouldn't we be in that position where we gain students? Cause that's, that's always a possibility, then we can add on. But, but to, to prepare like this ahead of time where we don't have a crash and without consideration of the reduction that we need to look at now. Man, that's, that's the biggest thing. That's the biggest harm we could do to our whole staff. And that's just waiting until the imminent crash instead of planning like this. So I know I looked at the executive portion of this, you know, content stuff. And man, I'll tell you what, what a lot, first of all, props and all the works that's been, been done and all the work that has to go forward because you don't come to these things without consideration for every, every position that we have and an evaluation of those things. So I know we have a lot more work to do, but I just want to say, I do appreciate that. We're, I do want to be very intentional with saying, we're all about community. And, and we want to be, we, we do value the teachers and the staff that brings everything to make student achievement our utmost priority. And so with that comes some, some hard considerations, no doubt about it. But sensitivities also to the fact that we want to continue to be, be those things that we talk about within our vision and our mission. You can't hear? Oh.
So those would be some of the guiding principles that I would suggest. As we're making decisions, recommendations.
Okay.
And, and I'm sure that the board realizes, or at least in my practice being here, you authorize so many positions and my job is then to put those positions where they are, are, are.
Most effective.
Kids, but I don't create a position without the board's approval, just like what we talked about with the, the DNA teachers. I'm asking them, you know, I'll be asking the board for two positions. And I'll show you where the funding will come from, from those. So that we don't get into the cycle of just being throwing positions out there. If you haven't authorized that position and job description as required by policy, then we don't have that position.
Right, understand.
That, that's a, that's a big belief of mine because they're your employees.
Ms. Kidman?
Yeah, I have some questions and thoughts. So I'm going to be brutally honest because I don't like blowing a bunch of hot air. So, um, I'm very frustrated with some of this because I thought this was a budget discussion and I heard all kinds of pretty little things and I heard very little in terms of actual reductions. I have a paper in front of me that I don't understand. Are you proposing that we cut kindergarten to half day? Or is this down the line?
That was your question, I'm sorry.
No, Mrs. Kidman, I, the, the packet that you have in front of you, that, that's a work product from about six months of work from multiple, multiple individuals cost, just costing out all the moving parts of our district. So when we, when we look, in specifically, you're looking at kindergarten and it's got a line through it as it's not even something that's considered. The idea that, you know, the, the, the reimbursement, we get paid for kindergarten at half, point five FTE for the students.
Yeah, I understand all that.
Right.
Um, but what I don't understand is what you're saying. Because I heard all these pretty words tonight, but I'm still wanting to know how much money do we need to cost cut so we're okay for next year? Is it a hundred thousand dollars? Is it more than a hundred thousand dollars? Are we in a rating process to see how many teachers will actually return their contract? And based on that, then we can actually make some budget decisions. I haven't heard anything about that. The other thing I'm really disappointed in is the fact that I think I've mentioned several times in last, or at least I thought I made it very clear, that I want us to look at administrative cost. We got an auditor's report today that says our administrative cost is very high. And, um, should have it right here again. But, um, our administrative expenditures compared to our peer districts are extremely high. Yet I heard Mr. Wallen say today, it's the teachers where it's at. I mean, it's, it's, so I really need us to see, I really need to see some proposals on how we are not, because. because every time I've gone through this process in the last few years, we're always pinching pennies. Oh, let's cut over here, let's cut over there. Oh, we have too many pair of pros. Well, that's cutting pennies. We've, I really need to see some, some cuts at every level and not, you know, and not just conveniently leave out administrators.
Okay, so I'll, I'll build a, an administrative cost out so that we can see the administrative costs across the district so that everything's lined out. And then we can, I can present that as well.
Okay, because I would really like to see that. Now, I'm not threatening administrators, I want to get that. But we need, we can't just, oh, because all we focused on was teachers, oh, we're going to reduce teachers based on our numbers of students. Well, yeah, that's great, that's what we need to do. But we also need to do the same thing with administrators. We can't just cut teachers and our administrative cost stays the same because it's just gonna, per student's gonna go up. And I can't, I mean, I'm looking at it from this point of view. When I started on the school board, we had about 3,300 students in this district. We're down 500 students since then or more. And, um, we need to figure out either, and I even hate to say this, but we need, we, you said it earlier, Mr. Wallen, about our, our, one of our biggest costs is buildings. We need to figure out if we can't just maybe reduce if we have to.
Hey, I hear what you're saying.
Because, I mean, we can talk all day about the money we're spending on copy machines. And I know that you're working on that. We can talk all day about cutting, you know, crayons for kids because we're gonna save some money over there. But when it comes down to it, it's payroll where the cuts need to happen. And I'm glad to see that we, I mean, I hate to lose anybody. But on the other hand, if people leave, then at this time, unfortunately, it's good for us because then the people who want to stay aren't in danger. And for that, I'm very glad. But then I would also like to just, I know I've had this discussion with you in your office. And, but when we do shift people around, we have to make very sure that we actually put in qualified people and not just shift things around as we have done sometimes. So I hope that will not go by the wayside either.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any other comments? Okay, uh, thank you very much, Dr. Mauer, Superintendent Wallen, thank you, board members, thanks. Let's move on to our last item. And that is the board corner for the newsletter. This should be quick. I know we'll get a very quick volunteer because we're all hungry. Who's volunteering for the next one? Chuck, thanks for the one in the last newsletter, it was very, very good. Appreciate that. So do we have someone that would like to do it and volunteer and work with Steve Law? Let's see, I think you did one recently, Ms. Fowler. Ms. D. You did a couple, I know I've done a couple. But, um, all right, not hearing anybody, I certainly can. And I wouldn't mind doing it.
In that group, but I was going to volunteer you because you, you are calling the basketball tournaments.
That's what you, that's what everybody wants is a summary of the basketball games.
Well, the inspiration you saw out there, you saw some high-quality coaching.
Sure.
You saw some high-quality playing. And what better thing than to accent that?
Well, the only thing I like focus on is how teams function.
There you go.
There you are. All right, well, I'll go ahead and do that. So now we're off the hook. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second? All right, we've got a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for the long, the length of this. We'll try to be more mindful in the